Okay, I'll call the Planning Commission for January 7th to order. Would everybody please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance, please? Could we have roll call, please?
Mr. Kaufman?
Here.
Ms. Stapleton? Mr. Olivus?
Present.
Mr. Reno. Ms. Taylor, absent. Mr. Weiskie?
Here.
Mr. Wolsey.
Here.
Thank you. And so, I'd like, first item on, or third item on the agenda, public comments. This is for item is for either general public comments or for public comments on an action item. If commenting on an action item, please fill out the agenda item on the request to speak form, and you can get the request to speak form to my right. Next is approval of the minutes for December 5th, 2013.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Weiskie, so move.
Have a motion.
Commissioner Reno, second.
Have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Anybody?
Abstention from the last meeting.
Yeah, thank you. Okay, City Council, LaZion, report. We don't have anything. Next item is approval of the 214, Planning Commission's schedule. I think everybody got that in their packet. Are there any dates that anybody has concerns about? Everything looks good?
Looks good.
We don't need a motion, do we? Okay, so we need a motion to approve-
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Weiskie, so move.
Commissioner Stapleton, I'll second the motion.
Have a motion or second. All in favor, signify.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes six to zero, thank you. Update on current projects from the Office of Communication and Community Engagement.
Good evening. Deanna Gashider, Director of Communications and Community Engagement. I've been asked here tonight to give you a quick update on our new mobile app. The City of Reno is excited to present the newest tool for citizens to engage with their local government. The new mobile app is available for smartphones, iPhones, iPads, and Android users. This is another way for residents to engage with the city, and it features a variety of interactive communication channels that make it quick and easy for residents to get information or express concerns. So I'm gonna, I've got my phone hooked up here. Hopefully, I won't get any text messages while I'm doing this, but I'm gonna take you through it live. Actually, let's do one more thing. So the app has six key features. You can report an issue. It gives you the current, latest news and blog posts. You can share ideas with one another and follow new ideas that citizens have that are being submitted to us. It's an initiative that we've undertaken. You can watch meetings live, sign up for alerts, and you can even, we do have a partnership with RTC where you can see live bus routes, so you could be standing on the corner, and I'll, I'll take you through that really quickly. First off, if you are like me and potentially aren't great with these sorts of things, we do have a tutorial with the question mark up here in the corner that explains what all of the icons are and what they're used for, so that helps people learn. Residents can instantly report an issue by reporting an issue. And then also what pops up here is, a lot of people don't know what ward they're in, who their council representative is, voting precinct, and jurisdiction. Often, they even call us about sparks and county issues. So this is hopefully going to alleviate some of the calls from coming in as we start to educate people. Hopefully, they won't have to make a call if they, if they know where they're at, or who they want to post a complaint to as far as the city council representative, et cetera. So part of an education process. Then, when you wanna report an issue, you push the megaphone and up pops different opportunities like graffiti, and then it's simply pick private property, and then you can post a picture and submit request. It's that simple. It starts the process, it sends it off to our system, and then we facilitate it. If you do report an issue, you can track it as a citizen. Once you sign up with us, only one time do you have to sign up and give us your name and your, your contact info so that you can participate with us in this manner. You can then check your requests, and here's a couple that I've tested, to be able to see where you're at and if it's been taken care of. So it's instantaneous, and you can also choose if you don't wanna be active and come and check your request, we can, you can choose to call, have you, have us call you or email you, so you can choose the way that we conversate with you about your issue. So by integrating the Facebook and Twitter opportunity, residents can also choose to post their reported issues on their social network channels and share with their friends and followers. And then I think one other cool feature that you might be interested in, sorry, is there's different ways to see the, the streets and where you're located, so you may wanna look at it more in a satellite-type format. And we did, we coordinated with our GIS department to make all these things come to life. News and blogs, you can share ideas through our Think Reno portal. You can sign up for alerts, so that we can, we do quarterly newsletters as well as regular email communications when something is needed. Also, when there are emergencies, alerts are good for you to be signed up with us. And then you can now watch meetings live, and if all goes well. Darn it, I just tested it and it did work. It's the commercial? You can see it live.
I think it's showing the presentations.
Is it? Okay. All right, I'm not gonna keep messing with that, but it does show it automatically, probably not because I'm hooked up to the presentation at the moment. And then live bus routes. Hopefully, it's no fun to do this in real time. There's probably not any buses out right now, but they do show as red buses, and you can see them moving as they're approaching up to the corner. So as we continue to get more opportunities to update this app, we will, we will continue to do so, and it's an instantaneous way for us to be able to communicate with citizens in a more efficient manner. Everybody likes to communicate in different ways nowadays. Not everyone likes the app, but if you don't, if you don't wanna come to a meeting, you can use the app, or if you want, because you can watch the meeting from your phone, or you can interact with us through the website, call us, chat with us, so we're trying to make sure we have a tool chest of ways for citizens to be more engaged with their local government. And that would bring my presentation to a close unless you have any questions.
Do we have questions?
I should, I should just end with letting you know that since December 15th, we've had 151 downloads. So that's, in comparison to other cities, that's actually pretty substantial. So we're on the right track. I think we're reaching out to more of a silent majority that maybe hasn't been engaged with us so far, so it's a good opportunity for us to get a more diverse feedback from a better, a more diverse demographic.
Do you have a question? Commissioner Stapleton?
Hi, I'm watching you right now on my phone.
You are? Good, it works. Thank you for validating my poor presentation.
I downloaded the app and, and tested it out. I'm super excited about it. I think it's great.
Great.
I've used a couple of the features, and I think that the interface is really neat, and also being able to report online, and I work with a neighborhood group, and we do a lot of calls to code enforcement and reporting, and so I was sort of testing it out to see, so that I could share it with my neighbors. And the only comment that I had was that myself, and also a lot of my neighbors most of the time, because they've been doing this for years, they like to be anonymous when they call, especially if it's on graffiti, just, or if it's on, say, one of their neighbors, and they, they like to stay anonymous. And there wasn't an option to be anonymous, because you have to log in in order to report, so, so that was my only comment.
Okay.
And I don't know if there's a way to do it without having to log in on the reporting part, but I think so.
Yeah, I think you can do it officially, but I think we try to make sure that if it's a complaint that we can follow up with you, we like to know who it is. But I'll work on making sure, I don't know if it's more a policy issue or if it's a system issue, so I would need to check into the anonymous issue, but I think it's a good comment.
Okay, I know that you can be anonymous, because I know-
When you call?
Yeah, absolutely. You can be anonymous when you call for a code, for a code violation or for graffiti.
Yeah.
And I think that's something that a lot of people like to do.
Yeah, it might be a shortcoming of the system, because you have to be logged in as something or someone-
Okay.
-into the system for us to be able to interact with you, but I can check.
Okay, well, that said, I think it's great, and I love the fact that you can watch the live meetings and get updates-
Okay.
...and also report online, and I'm excited to put the word out in our neighborhood to the folks who will probably-
Great, well, thank you for the opportunity to help get the word out and be here tonight. I really appreciate it. And I, I agree, I think we have a lo, a long way to go, but this is a good step in the right direction.
No, it's great. I really like it.
Cool, thank you very much for your time tonight.
Deanna?
Yes, sir.
I have a couple of questions. How, how are we getting the word out to the public?
Well, we do our normal distribution channels of, you know, free publicity. I did an interview today with Channel 2, for instance, so there's still ongoing interest in it and opportunities from a PR standpoint. But we're also looking at doing a Reno, we are, we just launched a brand-new Reno.gov site on December 17th, and so we're gonna do a little bit of paid outreach with that, and in conjunction with that, on the homepage of the site, we'll be promoting the app. So we'll be putting a little bit of dollars behind getting the word out to, to folks that maybe don't interact with us online.
Okay, so, we're gonna use this app instead of like Reno Direct?
Oh, no, it's, it is Reno Direct, it's just another way for you to get to Reno Direct. It truly is a Reno Direct app. It's just a different avenue to report through Reno Direct system.
And is that just monitored?
In fact, we debated long and hard about what to call it. Was it a Reno Direct app or a City of Reno app? And because we added some of the other features, we kept it more general, but the true app functionality of this particular app is about reporting an issue.
Okay.
The rest of it is really just connecting to our mobile site, Reno.gov, so added value.
But it's not, it's not like monitored 24 hours a day or anything?
Um, it's not monitored, but it does go into the system instantaneously and start the process.
Okay. So if there was an issue going on, then depending upon the urgency of it, would be depend upon what, you know, if you, like, if you wanted to call the police or whatever, it's-
Yeah, I wouldn't use it for an emergency.
Okay, yeah, or, you know.
It's being handled more during business hours, regular operating hours, but it does kick into the system immediately, so it does start the process.
Okay, great. Any other questions?
Mr. Chair? Just a comment, most of my questions have been answered, thank you. This is a wonderful app, and, and I think just three times in the last week, I've been asked, "What ward am I in?" And, you know, I send them to the City of Reno, the maps, you know, and that usually works best on a, on a actual desktop instead of a mobile device. With that mobile device, easy to use, wonderful, so I think it's a great app, in addition to City of Reno, and, you know, all of its, all of its people. So thank you very much.
Maybe we need to add planning commissioners, huh, to this? What jurisdiction?
That's right.
And might, would that be helpful to you, so you don't have to keep answering that question as well? So it would pop up-
It's an idea.
...and your name would be affiliated with whatever ward you're representing?
It's a decent idea.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, I look forward to adding you.
We have one more question.
I have one more follow-up.
Okay.
I think that's a great suggestion. I'm, I'm down with having, having my name associated with the Planning Commission and what area of the city I represent, so. Just to follow up on Chair Kaufman's question about the, the outreach, and it made me think about the NABs, and I remember you came to us and told us about the new sort of format or mechanism the city was looking at for communication and engagement for the public, and I thought, oh, you could take this to the NABs. And it made me think about, this is an engagement tool, and the status of the NABs and whether, is this an appropriate question to ask? The, the status of the NABs and whether things like the-
I think it's slightly off the agenda, but I can address it generally. We are going in front of council on January 15th with our follow-up to the six-month pilot program. So we went out and we had, first of all, the NAB leadership all met with us on a regular basis, and we went through the entire engagement program. We asked for feedback and sort of a task force approach to our engagement process, and what the, what was working with the NABs, what wasn't working with the NABs, how could we improve them? And so we're coming back to council on January 15th with a full report on what we learned, what we recommend doing moving forward. So that's next Wednesday.
Okay, great. Is this one of the tools that's the new engagement tools as part of that?
This is definitely part of the process, that we're pitching that is improving our engagement process. And I, I believe if NABs are no longer, and you represent the different wards and the developments, that it would be important to get that information out on the app so that people know who their point of contact is. So I, I think that's a great addition to the app that you made today.
I love the app. I'm one who really believes in the NABs-
I know.
...and the importance of the engagement and that face-to-face venue, but this is great, so, thanks.
Well, I look forward to your feedback as, as relates to that as well. We've worked hard to try to appease and listen to the critical feedback and, and make it a better program, but it, there's always room for improvement, so, thank you.
Thank you, Deanna. All right, public comments. First item on the agenda is LDC 14-00020, Waste Management Transfer Stations, and I'm gonna take disclosures right to begin with.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Weiskie, after speaking with our legal, City of Reno Legal Representative, my employer has a current contract going on with waste management, and so therefore is not to create any conflicts, I will be recusing myself from this agenda item.
Thank you.
Commissioner Olivus, I've visited the site and spoken with applicant's representative.
Commissioner Stapleton, I visited the site and met with the applicant's representative.
Commissioner Reno, I visited the site.
Commissioner Wolsey, I visited the site.
And Commissioner Kaufman, I visited the site and also talked to the applicant's representative. So with that, if the applicant would get up and make their presentation, please?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Greg Martell, on behalf of Waste Management. We ourselves don't have a formal presentation for you, but we've worked really well with the city staff on this project, and I thought I'd just kinda give you a little bit of an overview of how we got ourselves here today and what we're, what we're trying to accomplish. But essentially, this is a culmination of probably, God, we're going on six years of work on trying to improve the recycling program in, basically in the Truckee Meadows. And last year, the city council approved a, a new franchise agreement with, with Reno Disposal Company, which is subsidiary Waste Management. And as a result of that, we had certain conditions that we have to meet, and part of that includes this, this eco-center that we have before you today, which is essentially a, a complete facelift for our existing facility down on Commercial, Commercial Row. In 2011, we acquired the property across the street from the transfer station along the railroad tracks, and that's, was necessary for, for this project. We needed to have the extra space. When you get out there, it looks like it's a large piece of, piece of land, but when you start moving this heavy equipment around on it, it's not, it's not all that large. So we acquired that property. We made a commitment to the city that we would build this eco-center, which essentially is gonna provide folks the opportunity for the disposal of solid waste, green waste, e-waste, and recycling, all in one location. We're going to enhance the, the coverage area so that it's essentially more screened from the river and from the, the street, and also from the railroad track side, even though that's commercial on the other side, but we, we, we committed to screening that area. And we're gonna relocate our, our existing operations building, so that's going to be in the-
That's gonna be this building right here?
We're gonna relocate, that's where the, that's where the drivers and route managers will muster in the morning when the trucks deploy. Probably, one of the most exciting things about this project is the fact that we're going to start converting our fleet to compressed natural gas. And the, the location here on the, on the corner of Sage and Commercial Row is actually not, not part of this application, it was, it was part of our original special use permit. But we're, we're underway with construction on that. It will be operational later this month, and we will begin servicing the, the new single-stream recycling program throughout Reno with compressed natural gas trucks beginning in February. So, maybe that's a little clearer. So we're, we're excited about that particular component here. We've made retrofits to our existing shop that we needed to do in order to provide maintenance for these type of vehicles, and we, we anticipate being able to completely convert our fleet to compressed natural gas, gas trucks by 2020. So we've got approximately 200 pieces of rolling stock, and they run quieter, they have a, a more beneficial impact on the environment, and they're just, it's just a total better way to go as far as providing the service. So we contract with a third-party hauler who moves our material from Sage Street to Lockwood. They are looking at buying tractors that Freightliner is, is piloting to move the material from the, the transfer station out to Lockwood, so they're, they're interested in converting that. Part of our commitment to the city is that if the city obtains additional rolling stock in their public works operations, that they're able to purchase compressed natural gas from this fueling station. So it's, that's an exciting part of this project and something we're really looking forward to completely rolling out. These trucks are more expensive than your normal truck, but the, the cost savings you see on the diesel versus CNG is, is the trade-off. So I'm going to defer the balance of my time. If you have any questions for me now, or you wanna listen to staff's presentation, and then we'd be happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Okay, we'll probably ask questions-
Okay.
...after staff.
Okay.
Thanks, Greg.
Good evening, Vern Klos, Senior Planner. The applicant provided a pretty good overview of the project. In 1994, this facility was expanded to about 185,000 square feet, most of which was never constructed. This project will bring the facility back up to that building area around 185,000 square feet. It will add the recycling facility, it will, which is this blue building here, has some additions to the paper recycling facility to the west. But what this project will do is upgrade the facility with regard to parking, paving, landscaping, screening, architectural elements, which should, you know, be an asset to the site, because at this point, there's a lot of unpaved surfaces, uncontrolled runoff, those sorts of things, and with the first phase, a majority of those issues will be addressed with the paving of the parking lot up here and the, the area where the people come to line up to dispose of their, of their refuse into the transfer station. So this should be, again, a, a good upgrade to the facility and, and bring it up to the state-of-the-art level. There's a couple of variances being requested, which are relatively minor in nature. The first variance is to reduce the weather, the landscaping on the north side of, for a section of the employee parking lot right here, it's about 170 feet. It ranges from the minimum, it's supposed to be five feet, but it reduces from about two and a half to about four and a half, and that would be supplemented with a solid view screening fence. Also, this area is next to the railroad tracks, which doesn't really need a whole lot of screening, so we felt that what they were proposing was, was adequate, and also it allows them to get one more row of, of employee parking in that area, and it's, again, it's all being paved and landscaped, and it'll also add detention basins to help with the water disposal off of that portion of the site. The other variance requested is to remove the trees from, from the interior of the, of the garbage truck parking area. That's the result of line of sight technology they use to monitor the, the CNG that's being used for the, for the trucks. They need a line of sight to see if there's leaks or those sorts of things, and trees would interfere with that. And also, the landscaping's being relocated to the south side of the site along the top of the slope by the river, and it would be mainly evergreen trees to supplement the riparian and deciduous trees that are along the river, so you'll get a better screen from the river, and also on the east side. So we believe that that variance is appropriate just from an operational standpoint. Staff did receive one call. I'm, I'm kind of amazed, I only received one call, no other correspondence. The call was related to the installation of landscaping and how the facility would look, and to ensure that once the landscaping's installed, it, it would be maintained, and I explained to them that once the required landscaping has to go in, it has to be maintained, and it would be a code enforcement issue if it was not. Also, there is one typo that I found on page five, it's on the, the, the chart, the square footage for the existing recycling repair bin. Says 2,050 square feet, that should be 42,000. If you look at the totals, they don't add up to that, so it is 42,000. Staff is recommending approval, subject to conditions in the staff report. I'd be happy to answer any questions at the appropriate time. Thank you.
Thanks, Vern. I'll open up public, public comments. I do have one request to speak for, Mike Steadman.
Hi, Mike Steadman, hi. Listening to what the, the variances are asking for, what I'm concerned with really doesn't, isn't about what this is about, but there's a few concerns that I do have being on East Fourth Street and on the NAB and on redevelopment, as far as the trucks going out on Fourth Street, because we've been working with RTC on the Fourth Street and Prater Corridor, so they're talking about making that smaller, making a bike pass, that kind of thing, so I am concerned about, you know, trucks on Fourth Street. And then I'm also concerned about the landscape by the river, you know. You know, I would like to not to see a dump downtown in the first place, but that's not what this is about. You know, we, we're trying to revitalize the river and we put, we- You know, we're trying to revitalize the river, and we should be moving the dump out of right there, but that's not what this is about. But, you know, I want to make sure there's some accessibility along the river on that side, the north side of the river, and that it kept nice. And I would say deciduous trees would be better just for snow in the wintertime. If you have evergreens, you'll have a lot of ice in your parking lot. What else did I have concerns with? And then, you know, just the flood. But that's about all. Thank you.
Okay, thanks. Anybody else for public comments? Seeing here he none. I'll close public comments and bring it back to the commissioners for questions.
Commissioner Reno, I have a question for staff. You know, as I visited the site, and I've been there a couple of times, but there is a big berm for the river. Did this flood, has this ever flooded in the past, this area, during the big flood events we've had in Reno?
Not that I'm aware of, and that side of the river is 10 feet higher than the other side, so it would have to go out a really long ways to the south for it to flood on the north side.
And there must be monitoring wells, I assume, for this site, too, to see if any leach is going towards the river. I mean, I, like Mr. Stevens, am a little concerned, like, why do we have a transfer station right next to, you know, our river? But that's not the concern here. I mean, that's just a general concern I have. But we are nearly doubling, or over-doubling the square footage for this facility. Am I missing that wrong?
It's about a 50% increase.
50% increase.
From about 125 to 180.
Existing?
125 to 185.
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry, yeah. A 50% increase. So, I mean, but it's becoming more and more permanent, is kind of what we're doing here. I know they had concerns back in 94 about this, this site in general. I just want to make sure that it's safe, and it sounds like it's safe from flooding. And, you know, it is an industrial-zoned area, and so I can agree with that. So, my question, generally, those are my questions, is it safe? Do they have monitoring wells? Do they? I don't know if you know that.
That I do not know.
Okay.
We didn't receive any comments from the health department that indicated that there was a problem with that. We do have someone here from the health department that may be able to address some of those issues. But my understanding is the transfer station is, I mean, that where they bring the stuff in, that's like really thick concrete, several feet thick. And then also, the improvements they're going to be making to the parking lots will have to meet current code with regard to drainage and inserts in the inlets and those sorts of things.
Right.
So, obviously, the river's not the most ideal situation or place for this facility, but what they're doing here is upgrading the facility to meet current standards in all the new stuff that they put in, and it should address, you know, like surface drainage and those sorts of things. And again, they have to comply with health department regulations with regard to, you know, how the facility's operated and what can go through there and how it's handled.
Okay. No, I mean, I'll tell you, I'm on the fence here, and that's why I wanted to come and get discussion, because I see the need, but then I don't, there's some things I don't like about it, too, so... But I'll just wait and hear more about, from the other commissioners. Thanks.
Commissioner Stapleton, I'll follow up on Commissioner Reno's comments. And I just want to point out that Mr. Stevens and Commissioner Reno indicated their concerns about the location of the transfer station, and a part of what we're, and they said it's not part of the request, but I think it is, part of what we're reviewing is a special use permit for a salvage and materials reclamation facility. So, that is part of what we're looking at, and so we need to look at appropriateness of the location and adjacent uses. I am not as concerned, but that may just be because I understand the momentum behind the project and the reality of the situation, and this is where our transfer station is. It's by our river, even though our river is a really important, maybe even one of the most important assets we have here in our community. This is where our transfer station is. And so, I guess that just leads me to my question in terms of, the transfer station is going to be next to the river. Were there any concerns raised by, or was this brought, maybe this wouldn't be the right entity, to the flood project? Or any entities who would be concerned, or any impacts you could speak to that do come from having the dump next to the river? And in the staff report, it mentions that in 1994, when this was heard, the council and the planning commission did have concerns about the location of the facility next to the river. So, specifically, are there any tangible impacts to the river? You know, is there? I mean, it doesn't seem like there could be leaching, and I know there's not liquid hazardous materials, right, that go into there, or maybe there are. So, I guess just, you know, what are the issues maybe to the ecology of the river, and if there are any? It seems like there would be, but maybe there aren't. So, that's my question. Thanks.
We did refer this to the Corps of Engineers. We received no comments. We referred it to the health department. We did receive comments. They're also required to have an operations plan approved by the health department. You know, they have bio waste there, they have other, you know, various wastes that they have to comply with the health department regulations with regard to containment, how it's processed, those sorts of things. So, I mean, as far as we know, it's being operated properly, and what this would do is bring some of the portions of the project that should, you know, be upgraded, we'll upgrade them. The landscaping, the paving of the parking lots, the drainage off of the sites, the paving of parking lots, those sorts of things. So, we're not, we haven't had any red flag comments, you know, other than putting a facility like this next to the river is probably not the preferable location. I did the S U P on this in 94, so I've, this is a much better project than what was presented then. And what is going to happen to the site, if it's all built the way it's being proposed, it's going to, you know, increase its compatibility with the river if you can ever do that with a transfer station.
Just one follow-up question. I mean, if there's no impacts that we can articulate, you know, I'm comfortable, and it seems like a lot of mitigation is being done. Just one final question on that point. In terms of the trees, do you guys work with the urban forester? I mean, ecologically, are there certain trees that are better along the banks of a river that, I know, the trees that were mentioned in the application in the staff report, were those looked at in terms of what's appropriate, in terms of species and water use along the river, or just in terms of screening?
The primary purpose was to add to the screening value of the existing, you know, riparian vegetation and deciduous trees that are down, you know, closer to the river and coming up the bank there. We're looking at along the edge, right at the top of the slope, around the edge of the truck parking lot area, and then also around the recycling facility, so we could get, in the summer, you probably can't see this that well because of, you know, there's big shade trees in there. But in the winter, you know, when we're out looking at the site at this time of year, it's, you know, you can see the buildings and what's going on there a lot more apparently. So, what we wanted to do is help provide year-round screening to that. If you think it would be a good idea to have the urban forester look at the species, you know, we don't have a problem with that. I mean, they should be appropriate for that environment, but we're looking at it from the screening aspects. So, if you want to supplement the landscaping condition with that, I think that'd be a reasonable thing to do.
I would think that especially because the river's such an important resource, that to look ecologically at the type of trees that are appropriate there. I know different trees, like, for example, cottonwood suck up a bunch of water, and even though they're sort of a native species, sometimes folks say, "We don't want those next to the river." I would just think it would be, and if the applicant is agreeable, it would be a good idea to check with the urban forester, just in terms of species, and that that should be a consideration in addition to screening.
I think that...
More on questions. My question is, can we work with the urban forester? And I guess during discussion, then maybe we can talk about whether any of the other commissioners think that's important, and whether we need to adjust one of the conditions. But my question is, you know, if that would be something we would be able to do.
I think that would be a reasonable thing to consider.
Commissioner Olivas, just kind of following up on Commissioner Reno's question related to the size increase in the facility. You said about 50%. How much of that is, I know there's a variety of buildings here. How would you characterize that growth of the current transfer operations, recycling, and there's also administrative buildings in here, too?
The blue building with the administrative, or the visitor's center, where the MRF and the visitor's center is, that's about 60% of the expansion. And then over, there's, it's on a different graphic. This is about 60% of the expansion. These additions here are about, probably about 20%, so 80% roughly are going into the recycling, the paper recycling portion, and then to the MRF visitor's center portion. The rest are relatively small, and they're just help with the operational characteristics of the site to, you know, administer what's going. This is a regional facility. I'm assuming that's for waste management's regional offices there, and I'm sure the applicant could explain that better. And then this is a place where the employees training, and, which is probably 10%. So, a majority of the expansion is in the recycling and processing of the solid waste, you know, to get it into the recycling stream.
So, very little expansion of the current trash?
Well, the transfer station is not increasing in size, and also the amount of solid waste, 2,200, 2,200 tons, it's in the staff report, that won't increase.
That's the limit per day?
It's not proposed to be increased with, even with this expansion, because I'm assuming the materials come in, and then instead of them just going into the transfer pit and being a little bit processed, they'll be further processed in the MRF portion, and not all of that stuff will go to a landfill, it will go someplace else. So, the traffic increase on this is minimal, it's about 70 trips a day. So, the amount of people that work there and the traffic that's generated by this expansion, even though the expansion is about a 50% building increase, it's probably 5% increase over what is existing.
Okay, I have a question for Greg. My understanding is that you run this operation 24/7?
Correct.
Anyways, and one of the reasons for the S U P is just so you're in compliance, because it, back in '62, there wasn't a need, we didn't have a need for the S U P, that type of thing. So, that's one of the reasons for the, from 11 to 6 a.m.?
Yeah. I mean, it's not, we're not going to increase anything. We're doing the same thing today. We operate 24, well, maybe 22 hours a day. We have a little bit of a break, but we have to service the casinos at night. We can't get in there during the day. So, we have trucks running in the middle of the night that are servicing those places that we cannot get to during the day. And we have, I've been here almost 24 years, and we've always done it during that period. So, if I may, Mr. Chairman, I could answer a couple of questions that did come up. I'll start with Commissioner Reno. Yes, we do have monitoring wells. I wish I could tell you off the top of my head how many there are, but there's several, and we have never had a detectable amount of anything in those wells, so they are working correctly. The flood of 1996 was, it did crawl up the bank, but it never did breach the berm there, so, and that was probably the worst we've seen. We did make some enhancements to the, excuse me a minute, let me get my bearings here. Down here in the loading tunnel, we made some enhancements right here in this area because this berm got a little soggy, and so it's got a concrete wall there now. But it held up well to the flood. We did have some issues at our facility in Sparks, but this facility held up very well. As far as Commissioner Stapleton's idea, I mean, we would go to the experts. I mean, we want somebody to tell us what are the right trees, because, you know, I mean, I don't know. I mean, I know that in the summertime, you can't see it, but you can see it now, because all the leaves are off the trees. So, a blend of different types of trees is probably going to be the appropriate application there, and we would go to an expert to ask that question. With regard to, we use the term...
Greg, could I just interrupt you for one minute? I think somebody brought up that in the winter, is there an issue where you have all those trees, if they were evergreens? You know, with ice and snow, is that an issue around there, or do you just usually just use scrapers and...
Yeah. I mean, that's, I guess that's a question we would have to ask. I never quite frankly thought of that, that that would be an issue. But I don't think that we would want to make them all evergreens, certainly. That's why it would be appropriate to talk to an expert and say, "What would they recommend?" Tell them what we're trying to accomplish, and what would they recommend for us to plant there. Now, the term 22 tons has been used. We're nowhere close to that tonnage a day. I mean, we were kind of pushing up against that number in the crazy days of 2005 and 2006, but we're 1,200 maybe a day. So, the tonnage that's going to go through the facility is not going to really change. What will change is the mix. So, because more people are going to be recycling, and more's going to be going into this new area here, you're going to have less tons going into the transfer station itself. So, maybe it becomes 800 solid waste and 400 recycling, but it's not going to change the total tons. So, you know, we anticipate that with the rollout of the new single-stream recycling program, the actual number of trips into this facility, especially on the weekends, is actually going to decline, because the customers are going to have the opportunity to recycle at their home. They're going to be able to recycle their cardboard, their plastics, their glass, their tins, their luminums, all of those things that some of them now bring to our facility. We'll pick them up right at their house for them. And we think that that's going to decrease the amount of traffic. Now, this past weekend, we had our residential dump days, and it was a bit congested down there. If you are a customer in the city of Reno, as part of the new contract, you get to dispose of four loads per year at the transfer station whenever you want. So, you don't have to wait till residential dump days weekend, so it's going to go when it's convenient for you. We think that's going to cut down the amount of traffic that's going to occur on Commercial Row there during those peak weekends, because those folks have already gone at a different time. So, I think the key, and I think Vern alluded to it, was the fact that this project is going to do nothing but make this better, you know, than it is today, certainly. I mean, do any of us really want this where it's at? Probably not. But, you know, our contract with the city requires we have a transfer station in the city of Reno. So, I don't know where we would relocate it to, and the cost would be, when we looked at this in the early '90s, it was 30 million, so I suspect today it's going to be 50 million. So, that's a big number. So, hence, let's improve what we have and make it work where it's at. And that's what our intention is here. We want to make it better.
Anybody else have questions?
Yeah, I have a quick question. Since we have you up there. Is this exclusive to the city of Reno, this transfer station? Can you bring in trash from Verdi? How does this transfer station, will it grow? I guess my ultimate question is, will it grow in capacity as time goes on?
I don't think that we're ever going to see the building booms that we saw when we were pushing up at 2,200 tons a day. So, unless, you know, we obviously are going to have some growth, but I think it's going to be a more... but I think it's going to be a more reasonable and sustained growth as opposed to something that's just, you know, is, is so great that we just can't keep up with it. I mean, when I, when I look at my, the, the yards that I have and I look at the number of roll-off boxes that I have around, and I think back to 2005, 2006, I didn't have one in the yard, I had a waiting list. So, I don't think we'll ever get back to that point. So, I think we're just going to see a steady, we're just going to see a steady flow of, of, of new homes. We're hoping that more people will get involved in the recycling process, which will decrease the amount of solid waste that actually ends up at Lockwood. But overall, I don't see us ever getting to the capacity in this facility. I mean, that's my-
Yeah, and again, is this exclusive to Reno? What is the boundaries of this transfer station?
Well, we, we view it as the truck, the whole Truckee Meadows because the only thing that goes into that facility is Reno Sparks and Washoe County, solid waste.
Okay.
I mean, there's nothing, we're not, Carson doesn't come in here, Fernley doesn't come in here, they go to Lockwood, but they don't, they don't come to the transfer station.
I have one more question for, probably for Vern.
Okay.
My, my, my other concern as I was reading through the staff report, and it is something that I mentioned to the applicants when I met with them, is that there's a number of conditions that require a, one's a noise study, then there's landscaping plans, additional elevations, and more so than any project that I've ever seen, do we have what looks to me like essentially an incomplete application? Because there's a number of plans that we would usually see that aren't tonight as a, a part of, a part of the staff report of the application and instead are being asked for, you know, down the road and that the, the permit be contingent on receiving those. But usually, we have all of those as a part of the package that we look at so that we can use that to make a determination in our decision. So, I'm a little uncomfortable about that. And again, there's a number of them, you know, it's conditions five through like 16 is all plans that will be submitted later before the permit is, is, is granted if we approve this. And, you know, there are various different kinds of things that I think are important elements of the project that we're looking at. I don't know if you want to, if there's a reason or, you know, if one by one you want to address, you know, starting with number five, the noise study?
Vern Close, Senior Planner, the noise study, we've had conditions to have people verify what the noise generated from the facility is on a number of projects. One I can think of is a big industrial building we did up instead. It's like a million square feet and there was residential farther, closer than this was. And the, basically the condition is just because there is nothing in code because they're in MU, to verify what that is, what, what the noise is, we just added the code requirement that they don't exceed 65 decibels during the day and 49 at night, or the ambient noise levels, whichever are higher. And again, that's, right now, the facility is, is there already and I don't expect that to occur. I'm just trying to have them verify that before they go to build, it would be related to this building, the paper recycling building, and, and with construction of that building, a lot of their activities are going inside of the building. And also, most of those activities don't occur at night. The only place, and you guys can correct me if I'm wrong, that I, I understand it operates after 11 is just the transfer station portion bringing in pickups from the casinos. So, during the day, there, there really shouldn't be a noticeable increase, but we, we just recommend that condition so that those people, because they're in MU, get the same protection as if they were in a residential zone, so.
Right, no, I appreciate that and I, but I, it's just because I saw it in the, the application that you had requested an actual study. And I know we've had this condition before where we want to make sure that the, you know, residentially adjacent properties are protected and that they're, you know, that the noise levels aren't too high. But I saw that you, you asked for an actual study, so that was something that I was wondering if there was an actual study that we're missing for this?
No, there's, there, no, the condition, they would have to provide that when, when they come in with a building permit to expand that portion of the, of the facility. The rest of it's-
I guess it's the other ones that I'm more concerned about. There's landscape plans, there's the fence, there's-
Well, the landscape plans, most of them are just, are, are just ensuring that they're meeting code. I mean, with, with the variance, they had to put trees in here, now we're just having them relocate them around here. They just have to verify that the trees that were going in there are being relocated. The fencing, again, is a, a code screening requirement for outdoor storage. A lot of this stuff is, is more code, so that, you know, I don't necessarily review all the building permits for the projects I do. So, a lot of these conditions are in there just so that when the building permit, permit gets reviewed, those aspects that were deficient, basically, these are code requirements.
Okay, but elevations, we usually see complete elevations.
But you, you have the elevations in, in the plan. I just indicated the elevations that didn't meet it, so they have to come up with revised elevations. Basically, they would carry those treatments around to the elevations that, you know, are deficient at this point. And we've, we've conditioned projects in the MU to do that at other places. Again, we have the basic elevations, all they have to do is expand on them to the, to the, the building frontages that, that are deficient.
Okay, I mean, you do indicate that the, the elevations that you received didn't meet code and so-
No, the-
With the, was it articulation and?
No, no, I, I indicated in the staff report, which ones-
So, I mean, if, if you're comfortable and if the other commissioners are comfortable, then I'm comfortable, it just looked like a whole lot to me.
This elevation does, this one doesn't. And it's, it's, it's pretty apparent, so I'm just pointing it out that they have to meet code when they come in. And again, this elevation is fine, the one on the administrative, those elevations are fine, I mean, most of them meet it, it's just, whenever we see deficiency, we point it out and say, you have to comply or you need to do this, and that's what the conditions are for, to enable us to recommend approval. So, that's why they're, I mean, I know I've done this on millions of projects, I haven't done millions, but on hundreds of projects where we've added conditions like this. So, again, it's, it's more related to code or it's not addressed in code because it's in MU and we want certain things to occur, so we reference those sections of code that they, that they need to comply with. So, we have a basis for determining if they're meeting that on the elevations that are deficient.
Commissioner Olivas, so basically you're just saying that the conditional conditions are, are, you don't really even need them because if they didn't meet them when they came time for the permits, they would get shot down at that point anyways?
Not all of them, like the, the, the sound one is code, but it, it, code does not apply to this particular situation, so that's why we added it as a condition, but it's basically meeting code for residential adjacency. Adding the landscaping on number eight, they're requ, when they, they're deficient on landscaping. Code says when you add square, add building square footage to a building that doesn't meet landscape, scape code, you have to add landscaping in proportion to that increase, that's what condition number eight says. Number nine, just tells them where to move the trees to out of the, the fleet parking lot. Number 10 is related to the outdoor storage, which is supposed to be screened, that's really code. But again, it's, it's a way to ensure that it gets done during the building permit review process because the person that reviews that permit might not have all of, you know, the, the intricacies of the particular project. So, that's why we put them in there, so they don't get missed.
So, you're just highlighting them?
Yes. And then the street landscaping is just code, the parkway and the land, and the, and the sidewalk, that's what you're required to put in in the MU. So, again, we're just designating where they go and that they have to go in initially because a lot of these areas are deficient. So, the, a lot of those conditions are just saying with phase one, you have to do this, not, there's no timeframe in which to do it. That should also increase the, or upgrade the look of the facility right off the bat when they first come in versus waiting seven or eight years to get all these improvements. And I believe the applicant is agreeable to doing all of this.
Okay, back to the commissioners for discussion.
Mr. Chair? I, I, actually, I think this has been great discussion, good questions. I just wanted to say though, I mean, after visiting the site and going through this, I think it made perfect sense to me exactly what they were doing, all the conditions. I do agree that if this was a discussion about potentially moving this location, this would be completely different and I'd have a lot of different thoughts about this and if that was a possibility. But as it stands now, with the existing use and using that property adjacent to it, I believe this actually improves the, the, the area and what they're using, so I'm in support of it.
No, I, I agree with that, this is a dramatic improvement. You could argue out about whether it belongs there in the first place, but it's been there for longer than town and town's grown up around it. So, it is where it is and, and I think that, that they've taken a lot of steps to, to, to be better neighbors and improve the whole, the whole process. It's, I guess, when you look at the growth and the building coverage and the nature of what's going in there, just kind of going in there myself, they always check your truck and make sure you're not taking in cans of paint to dump in there. And I guess kind of thinking this through, I think if we actually pull out some of the recyclables, it's going to make it easier for them to police some of those types of things, the, the noxious items that, that could potentially end up in there in the first place. Because they do, they do review that when you go in there and, and I think that this is going to help them to, to protect that. They, just from personal experience going in there, they do check it pretty good. So, I think that they've taken a lot of steps. I mean, when I look at some of the, the variances, the, the, moving the trees around, I think, I think a lot of the, the things that they've looked at make a lot of sense. I guess, the, I don't, some of the things may not make sense here as far as the parking requirements and the trees in the middle of the parking lot in the first place because I, I view this as more equipment storage really than, than parking. They're licensed vehicles, but, but this is heavy equipment that happens to be driving around the streets. So, I think that they've actually taken our standards and improved upon them in, in some ways. So, I think this is a good positive project.
Commissioner Stapleton?
I, in, in terms of the general discussion, I'm comfortable with the things that we talked about. And we didn't really get into a detailed discussion on the variances and the issues there and the findings that we have to make, which is really what we're looking at. I think the important piece of this, in addition to the SUP. And as, as you guys know, my main concern usually for the variances, can we make the findings in terms of, you know, we shouldn't be granting a variance unless there's an actual hardship. And in the case of both of these, I do see what the hardship is and the need for the variance, both for the landscaping on the edge of the parking lot as well as for the placement of the trees. You know, I see that there's a physical hardship in, in terms of the northern edge boundary for the first variance and, and how that's a, I guess the boundary is uneven and so it's difficult to have that, to meet the requirement of that buffer. And then also the safety issue with the trees for the second variance, so I'm comfortable with those as well. And I think the only thing, just to return to my initial question on the trees and if we could add a condition that the applicant, which they said they were agreeable to, to work with the urban forester on what trees would be, that they could also work with the urban forester in consideration of the ecology of the river environment and what would, what trees would be appropriate, not only in terms of the screening, but also in terms of the species. So, then I would, so I don't know if that's a point of discussion that other commissioners want to touch on, but that would be something that I would suggest.
Commissioner Reno?
Yeah, I was on the fence when I was looking at this and now seeing the discussion, hearing the discussion and seeing everything, I can make the findings, especially findings A, and there's a couple of them I, I looked at that I can, I can particularly make. So, it looks like we all can and that's, that's kind of a good thing, I guess. Again, I, I don't really like the, the location, but that's not really what's up for discussion. And they've done everything they can to, to make it work and it's going to be a better site for it.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion when we're ready.
Before you make a motion, can we talk about Commissioner Stapleton's, about the trees? I think, I think we need to talk about that or, I, I guess, it's kind of a question to you Vern, is this landscaping that goes before the city? Also, and this, and the city virtually will make the decision on, on what trees go in there?
We would review the plans, Vern Close, Senior Planner, we would review the plans. The applicant, at this point, would propose what to put in there. I know that the landscape architect with CFA that prepared the supplemental plans that you see here, he's pretty knowledgeable about repurlying and he did the, the creek bed up by Summit Sierra, which I guess won an award for, you know, it's a restoration project, but it also involved having the proper species and those sorts of things. So, again, I think that their landscape architect, whoever he is, could work with the city's urban forester to determine, you know, what, if anything, needs to be changed with regard to what they're proposing. Again, I, I, I believe that having some evergreens in there to provide year-round screening is a good idea, just the species and their placement so that they're, you know, proper for the environment and also aren't causing, you know, problems with snow and ice. Again, I think where they're going to be placed, it's more to kind of get the view from looking down to up than it is to be right up on top and shading half of the, the truck parking area. So, I mean, that's just one example of this area in here. So, again, I, I, I'm not quite sure how to word it other than the, you know, something to the effect that when they apply for landscaping, when they have plans, when they apply for a permit that requires landscaping, that the species and location of trees, you know, that are required adjacent to the river be reviewed by the urban forester, I mean, something to that effect.
Okay, thank you.
And, and we could do that as a separate condition that kind of, you know, applies to any, any portion of the project that has landscaping that would be affected by that.
Yeah, I'm, I'm comfortable with that. Do we need to, do we need to hash out the wording for the motion? Yeah, we do, okay, so.
For the record, John Shipman, Deputy City Attorney, I think Vern, Mr. Cluse, did give the framework for it. If you'd like to button that down a little bit, I'd encourage it, but.
I, I would just say upon review of the permit or, prior to the issuance of the permit, the, prior to review of the landscaping plan during the building permit process, the applicant should work with the forester and their landscape architect to ensure that the trees are appropriate for the ecology and environment of the river, to make sure that the, the trees and landscaping that will be, that will be adjacent to the river are appro, are environmentally and ecologically appropriate. Okay, I got nods all around, so.
Okay, so if we, we need to break these motions down by the SUP and the variances?
For the record, John Shipman, that would be preferred if we could just go through it one at a time.
Commissioner Woosley? Commissioner Woosley?
So we're ready for a motion?
We are.
This is Commissioner Stapleton in the case of LDC 14-00020. Based on compliance with the applicable findings, I move to approve the special use permits with the addition of the condition as articulated earlier regarding the landscaping adjacent to the river. Do I need to give it a number, the condition? Okay, oh, let me try that again. I would move to approve the special use permits with the addition of the condition, with the addition of condition number 16, as we articulated earlier regarding the landscaping adjacent to the river.
I'll second the motion. Commissioner Reno?
And can you make those findings?
Yes, I can make the findings.
So can I.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Pass five to zero. Next motion?
Would anyone like to share with me in making a motion on one of the variances? There you go.
Commissioner will leave us, I'll make the motion. We don't need any special language for the variances, do we? Okay, so in the matter, LDC 14-00020, Waste Management Transfer Station redevelopment, redevelopment, I move to approve the variances, as stated, to modify the landscaping and modify the tree requirements with the conditions, and I can make the findings.
Commissioner Woosley, based upon the compliance with the applicable findings, I also second the movement, I'm sorry, the special, the variance subject to conditions.
So I have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Passes five to zero. Good luck on your project. Thanks. Okay, the next item on the agenda is TXT 13-0005, Amendment to the TODS Standards. And welcome back, Commissioner Wieske.
Good evening. Claudia Hansen, Planning and Engineering Manager. So, this ordinance should look very familiar to all of you. I think you were all here, I think Kathleen was the only one. From our last workshop, I believe I incorporated, hopefully, all of the comments that came out of those, out of those workshops. I have two witnesses here who I'm sure will jump up if I missed anything on, on the comments that they brought up. I don't know, Chairman, if you'd like me to go through the ordinance page by page, or if we just want to focus on any questions or comments? It's up to you.
It's a long ways to go for everything. How about the changes?
There have been very few changes since the last workshop. We had it pretty narrowed down from the workshop. So, starting, I'll just, I'll briefly go through it, how about that? I won't, I won't read every word. So on page seven of the, of the ordinance, we've added in a definition of the Western Gateway Regional Center Planning Area Overlay District. We didn't have one before because it's just standard zoning in that district. So now we've created a zoning district for those, which is the area out by Gold Ranch that, there's a small portion in there, some of it's going back to the county, some of it's going to standard zoning, some of it's going into Western Gateway MU. We didn't have one of those, so we've created it with this. You'll see further on in the ordinance that we have no specific standards for the Western Gateway Regional Center. Most of it is regulated by what was the Mortensen-Garson Agreement from 10 years ago or so. Those standards are in code. There are no specific code standards, other than the MU base zone standards, for the mixed use in that area. We left it as reserved section because we felt that that area, if we are going to put in standards, really needs to focus in with a working group from that area. We don't really see a need for it at this time, but we can always go back and add that section, and we've created this section, so it's available to go back and do a detailed look at that area. Page, starting on page 56 of the ordinance, is the land use table. Since we created the Western Gateway Regional Center, we have added specific land uses that will be allowed in that area. Again, that will be for the area out by the Gold Ranch facility, business. Starting on page 73, we went through and, I think we only added land uses into the TODS. Most of them into the North Virginia Transit Corridor. For example, you'll see on page 73, we added boarding, boarding and rooming houses in MSTC, single-family detached in East Fourth Street. Automobile rental, we changed to site planner views, and there are, there are a number of changes throughout it. On, starting on page 86, are the changes to the mixed-use base zoning district. And I think we've gone over all of those before at past workshops. You'll see through each of the transit corridors, we, we've looked at changing the FAR for the secondary corridor, or eliminating the FAR for the secondary corridors and the density requirement. You will see some of the density requirements were increased from 14 to 18. That is to reflect the current, the recent changes to the regional plan, so that we stay in conformance with the regional plan. We increased some of the density, minimum density requirements. That's never seemed to come up as an issue through the workshops, as a density issue. We've never had anybody having a hard time getting more residential units on there. So we raised a couple of them from 14 to 18. And the MU, I think we've covered all of those. I did not include Midtown in this. Midtown is adopted, it's part of the code. Anybody who gets a copy of MUNI Code, it's now in MUNI Code in print. And I did not include that in this so that we didn't confuse the two. It is in there, even though it's not shown in this. Sometimes when ordinances pass each other between hearings and print, they won't show up, and I did it intentionally on this one, so we didn't confuse with, with Midtown. Page 117 is the beginning of, I'm sorry, 116, the beginning of the South Virginia Transit Corridor. Some changes on parking. This is one that, one of the densities switched from 14 to 18. See if there's any other highlights I can bring up. It reflects the change of the FAR to .75 in the northern portion outside of a, of a transit stop. I think that's about it for there. The Mill Street Transit Corridor, we removed a number of the, the parking requirements and architectural, and architectural and site layout, and just referred back to standard code. So, just to keep it simpler, this, this is actually probably going to reduce the size of the MU overall a little bit, which would be nice. A lot of it is now covered under the base zoning and is consistent throughout the transit corridors. East Fourth Street. I think the big change here was on page 122, we've got for parcels fronted, for parcel frontage is located adjacent to East Fourth Street in a minimum of 75 percent, and for all other parcels, a minimum of 50 percent of the total street frontage shall be comprised of building. I know Commissioner Stapleton was concerned about that, keeping that building frontage up there on East Fourth Street, so we put that wording in there to address that. We have secondary corridors identified in there as well. North Virginia Transit Corridor begins on page 123. And I don't, simplified a lot of the language, not many. The biggest change on, on North Virginia Transit Corridor is going to be the, it all switched to secondary corridor. And then we added in some, back in some of the industrial uses, the whole, the very far northern portion, most of the North Virginia Transit Corridor was industrial prior to MU, so we added some of those back in, most of them with the special use permit, as they were in the industrial zone. West Fourth Street is going to have primary and secondary identified. Again, took out parking and would refer to code. By code, I'm sorry, I mean standard code for parking. It's all code. And I think that's about it. And then there as well, the density was increased from 14 to 18. And that is a, a quick summary of where we were three months ago, four months ago, when we had our last workshop.
Okay. Do we have some requests to speak for? Okay, for public comments, Ken Crater? Followed by Angela?
Good evening, for the record, Ken Crater. This has obviously been a long process, close to two years, and there's more than a little bit of paperwork attached, and I think in the end, we've come up with a really good document, and these changes, in my mind, are definitely going to help the development of the Reno area, which I think is the goal that we all had when we first started. And I believe that we've achieved that. I really just have a couple of comments, and those relate to basically one, one item for discussion and then something else that I think might be an oversight. But if you go to page 89 in the standards, we had a lot of discussion about some of those areas where if we don't meet the strict interpretation of the standards, that there ought to be the ability to move forward with a site planner view on things like building orientation, for example. And I believe that one of the goals, again, was this flexibility in working on these standards, and I want to bring up a couple of examples, is, first of all, the city of Reno, as you probably well know, has been looking at sites for a new police station. And there's the opportunity for this new police station to possibly fall within one of these TODs. Down the road, you could have perhaps like a fire station. And that, to me, would be a unique circumstance where perhaps they can't meet all of the criteria within this code, because a police station's going to have a lot different requirements in a retail building, for example, security. And so, maybe there ought to be the opportunity for the administrator in these unique circumstances to allow a project to move forward with a special use permit, even though it doesn't meet all of these different standards. Another example is, I had a meeting with a gentleman not too long ago who just recently brought a forward, project forward to the commission for some new apartments and townhomes along the east side of Virginia Lake. He was seriously considering doing some really cool restaurants right on the lake, but because of the TOD requirements, he couldn't work through the issues, and he just dropped it. And that, to me, would have been a great project for Virginia Lake and another opportunity for the administrator to say, you know, this is really a unique circumstance. I think in this case, you ought to be able to come forward with a special use permit and let the planning commission decide whether or not a project like this makes sense. So that would be my only comment on that, that, that area, is maybe there ought to be the opportunity where in circumstance, you know, with unique circumstances, the administrator has the ability to allow that project to come forward with a special use permit, and maybe, and even an appeal process to the city council if staff says no, you know. I, I just think that would be a great opportunity for that flexibility, after all the work that we've done within this document. And the only other comment I have, I'm thinking maybe that's just an oversight, because I think we talked about this, and on page 117, the South Virginia Transit Corridor, it has a deletion of flashing and animated signs, and as I recall, we had discussed that, and that was meant to stay in, that you could have those flashing and animated signs on the South Virginia Street Quarter or streets with more than four lanes. And that's it, and I greatly appreciate all the great time and effort that the commission has put into this project. Thank you very much.
Okay, Angela?
While Angela's coming up, flashing animated signs, that is covered under the sign code. So, which is why we took it out of this section to be consistent and just refer back to the signs.
Yeah, I think I remember that.
For the record, Angela Foose with CFA. I have a handful of just housekeeping comments that I wanted to make sure we get into the record before this moves forward. This has been a very long process, a year and a half to, to two years, I believe, and there were a lot of comments that were discussed and brought up again multiple times. So, I know, just keeping track of what we thought we liked and then changed our mind and said, well, maybe that's not such a good idea, we've kind of come full circle on a lot of these comments. So, I'm going to start with just the housekeeping comments. If everyone could open up their document to page 86. And at the very bottom, dealing with sidewalks. So item 4A1, we have a six-foot requirement. And then you go to the next page, item 2, followed by an eight-foot requirement. And then the next section, item 3, is a four-and-a-half-foot requirement. So, my only housekeeping issue is this then creates an area of 18 feet 6 inches, and I think we were trying to keep it under 18 feet. So, we may want to change one of those numbers. Okay. Next page, number, page 116, 116. The parking within the South Virginia Transit Corridor, north section. So this is the area south of Midtown, but what would that be north of? Where's the line? Is it Plum? No. So convince, yeah. So, basically between Moana and Midtown is the area we're talking about. Parking requirements for restaurant and retail uses within this area, it reverts to the downtown regional center plan, where the parking requirements for retail and restaurant is zero. So in Midtown, I 100% agree. My concern with this, and I've seen this happen on multiple projects, is that this is a portion of South Virginia, where we're going to actually have retail that's more than just a 1,200 square foot small pad. We're going to have potentially some substantial retail and some substantial restaurants that want parking and need parking, and can't get tenants unless they have parking. But per this code, they have to provide zero parking. So all I'm saying is, let's keep that in there, but what if we added a maximum parking, so that the minimum is zero? So if you want to provide zero parking, that's great, but why don't we put in a maximum as well? So that you don't trigger a variance or a project that won't work because you're providing a parking space for your project. I think we had this in the TOD in the previous version a couple of years ago, where we had minimum and maximums. The maximum that I would suggest would be standard code. If you want to come up with another suggestion, I think that's great, but I'm just thinking realistically, again, if you have Midtown, all your parcels are small, parking is, is not wanted, because most of that's already built out, and people don't want to have to provide parking because they can't. But in this portion of the South Virginia TOD, there's a lot of undeveloped property where it's not necessarily realistic that we're going to get tenants that don't want parking. So if you want to discuss, or I can just move on.
Yeah, why don't you go on, and then we'll?
Okay.
I think we're all taking notes.
Okay. On the next page, 117, this issue is item C2. This has to do with a project that you recently dealt with. Parcels that are 300 feet in width or more have to provide that 10-foot pedestrian walkway. This applies to residential and non-residential. So, as Commissioner Wieske brought up, what if you have a parcel that's 300 feet wide and you're putting one house? and you're putting one house? Are you required to provide a 10-foot wide pedestrian pathway through your parcel? Per this code, yes. What I would suggest is that if you want to leave that in there, you make it relevant to non-residential development. So that would be if you had retail, commercial, restaurants, you would provide a 10-foot pedestrian pathway through the parcel. So basically, the only thing where it would not be required is residential.
Where's that?
What section?
One, seven.
So on page 117, item C2. It's kind of in the middle of the page. And then if you go down a few more paragraphs, item E landscaping. We've taken out all the landscape requirements for the South Virginia Corridor, and I don't know if that was just an oversight or if we really want to take away all specific requirements and revert back to just mixed-use zoning.
Yes.
Then on the next page, page 118, that first paragraph, and this is talking about density and intensity, this is the very next page. It does not specify what the floor area ratio is for areas that do not have bus rapid transit, adjacent bus rapid transit. So I think maybe we could just add it. Looking in the master plan, it looks like .25 FAR when it's not adjacent to rapid transit. Otherwise, you're digging through multiple documents to try and figure out what the Then the next comment was on, and this is really kind of universal, so page 120. In the middle of the page, there's a table, 18.08, point three, or dash 34 for landscaping. It has a specific landscape requirement if you are mixed-use and have a floor area ratio between 1 and 1.5, but it doesn't have any other landscape requirements if you are above that or below that. Most of the other TOD sections have kind of a tiered landscape requirement so that if you have more density, you provide less landscaping. So I'm kind of seeing that throughout the TOD, and I'm wondering, would it make more sense to just put in some universal landscape requirements, these universal tiered landscape requirements? Kind of what you have in the mixed-use section, I believe on page 91. Yes, so page 91.
Just going to jump up here, we can see if we can handle the conversation. Yeah, so that should have been on page 120, the landscape should have been, should have had a strike through, and it should just revert back to MU basoning.
Okay. And maybe a wire up here. So page 121, that landscape section as well.
Can you guys both speak into the microphone, please? Thank you.
Sorry. So on page 121, the landscape section at the very bottom of the page. So mixed-use, less than 1.5 FAR is 10%. Should that be greater than 1.5 FAR?
It should be. And that table should just be struck through, it should revert back to MU.
Is there any interest in, again, making all the landscape uniform throughout the TOD?
That's the intent.
So should we get rid of some of these other ones? So page 119, in the middle of the page, this is the Plum Lane Crossing landscaping.
Plum Lane Crossing is a specific station area, so there it is geared towards just that specific area for the development. That's 90% done.
Okay. And then, so that was pretty much it for my housekeeping comments. Just more of a general overall comment. Last month, the city council reviewed the master plan that was before them for the TOD, and a couple of city council members made some comments about how's the TOD standards going and where are we at? And a couple of years ago, this is what we asked for, are we getting what we asked for? And specifically, the things that were brought up were the concerns that too many people have to come forward with a special use permit for any kind of development within the TOD. So how can we improve this situation? Again, one of the council members brought up the fact that in certain areas, maybe we want to allow development to occur even though it's not able to meet the TOD. It's still a great project. It may not be able to meet all these standards. The way that we have it worded now is if you can't meet certain standards, you trigger a variance. And as you know, findings for a variance can be very difficult because you have to show there's a hardship. So what if it's a great project, but maybe the building shouldn't be on the front? Maybe the building should be in back? Or maybe we shouldn't have all the parking in one location? Maybe it should be integrated differently. So I just wanted to echo Ken's comments about the fact that maybe we need to add some language in the TOD that allows, in certain circumstances, a special use permit. So you still have the opportunity to review the project. It just allows for more flexibility from the developer's point of view so that we can have these great projects that maybe would trigger a variance that now could trigger a special use permit for certain standards. And that was it.
Thank you.
Thanks, Angela. Is there anybody else that would like to make public comments? Seen, hearing, none? Then opening up the commissioners for questions. Go ahead, Ms. Stapleton.
I just want to lead off real quick and address a couple of things that Angela said. I appreciate her minor housekeeping adjustments. The majority of those were things that were good catches, so thank you. Thrown in between those housekeeping suggestions were some pretty big policy changes that I think would be disingenuous to call just housekeeping, specifically the one on changing the parking on the South Virginia Street TOD from a no required to a minimum max, as well as the item on page 117, C2. And I think maybe, you know, we can discuss this, the commissioners can discuss this, but this is one, parcels wider than 300 feet in width shall provide the 10-foot pedestrian walkway. I think her suggestion is not to have that on residential. That's something that we've all been comfortable with up to this point and I think is a pretty important tenet to good walkable urban planning, you know, breaking up large swaths or breaking up larger blocks into smaller blocks, encouraging walkability, which is, I'm sure, something Angela understands, that she's a very well-trained and smart urban planner. So that's not something that I support. And furthermore, this is specific to her client's project that we heard, planning commission before last, where this is one of the things they were asking for a variance on that we did not grant. And so I would say that not only is it a policy change that I don't agree with, but it's one that's pretty clearly specifically geared to one developer and one project, and I don't think we should be doing policy changes based on the interests of one developer. That's it for now.
Mr. Chairman, if this is a good time for questions, I've got questions.
Yeah, perfect time.
Claudia, question for you. Ken made a statement that, and maybe I misinterpreted it. The question is, does staff prevent projects from coming before planning commission for SUPs or variances?
Do we prevent them from doing that?
Yeah, that's what I thought I heard Mr. Crater say.
Anybody's allowed to apply for whatever application they.
Okay, so if, if, if an applicant has a project and they don't necessarily agree with staff, they still have the opportunity to submit their variance application or SUP application and bring it before us? And if they still don't like what the planning commission decides, they can appeal that and take it to city council?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Crater? Ken? Did, did I, I want to, I don't want to misinterpret what you were stating, and I think I may have with the answers I just got from Claudia. What am I missing from your statement?
Well, you gave an example, and then Claudia can address it. Let's say it's the police station.
Well, you gave an example of some restaurants on, proposed restaurants on Virginia Lake. So let's stick with that one.
Okay, well, let's say you have a special circumstance where a project needs parking in front of the building. And per this code, you can't have parking in front of the building, period. Well, it says in certain cases, for example, building orientation, you can go forward with a site plan review, but it doesn't say anywhere in here that if you don't meet that parking in front of building standards, that you can move forward in any circumstances.
Okay, but that's why we have a variance application, correct?
Correct.
So the applicant, at that point, needs to just go ahead and file for a variance application and then bring it before us for a review to see if we agree with a reduction in parking or location of parking or whatever the variance may be that they can't do with a staff review.
But the difference is the findings for a variance are much different, as you know, than the findings for a special use permit. And there could be circumstances where maybe a hardship isn't there in terms of the unique shape, shallowness of the lot, et cetera, et cetera, but from a special use permit standpoint, it makes absolutely perfect sense to consider that project. So that's why I'm saying that, that there might be a circumstance where one or two of these items can't be met specifically, and it doesn't only make sense from a variance standpoint, but it makes all the sense in the world from a project standpoint, bringing that forward to the planning commission for a special use permit so you can decide on the actual merits of the project. That's where I'm coming from.
So, okay, so what would, and I'm trying to understand this because I, I understand what you're saying and I, and I agree in theory with what you're saying, okay? But if, if the developer comes forward and they show their site plan to staff and staff says, well, here's what code says that you've got to have this parking, and if you want to change your request for parking, we've got to meet these findings. You were former staff some 20 years ago. You used a similar thought press to what, thought process to what the findings are to determine how much latitude you have in gray area on a staff review, right? So what's the difference today from, I guess I'm confused, I don't understand. If the applicant doesn't agree with staff in their findings in a face-to-face meeting on why they wouldn't approve a project, why would the applicant not then ask for the, for a variance application?
Well, it just gets down again to really the findings. The findings for a variance are very unique, and you're all very familiar with those because you've had a lot of cases lately dealing with a variance. So I'm saying that there is going to be circumstances that are going to come up, we all know they're going to come up, where there's a great project out there, but it doesn't meet the specific requirements for building orientation, off-street parking, blah, blah, blah. Now, some of those say, hey, that's okay. If you don't meet building orientation or floor area ratio, you can come forward with a site plan review. But there's still a few items out there, like example, the off-street parking, where that site plan review is not an option. So that means your only option left is a variance. Well, there's a lot of cases where you're flat not going to be able to make the findings for a variance, but if it came forward with a special use permit, it's an entirely different subject matter because the findings for a special use permit are so much different than a variance. It may have nothing to do with the shape or shallowness or topography. It may just be, you know, good site planning where the planning commission would like the opportunity to see a project and decide on the merits based on the findings for a special use permit.
And what, what happens if, if we decided to give staff the latitude to do this site plan review and they said no? Then your applicant still has to come forward and make the findings of a variance and/or a, an SUP to get approval, right? So you're doing the same process. There's nothing changing.
Again, with the exception that if it doesn't meet these specific standards, your only option is a variance. Unless it relates to those items.
But there's no, there's, it's the same thing. If staff doesn't agree, if staff doesn't give you the go-ahead, then the only thing you have, the client has to do is to come before us.
Right, but it would be in the form of a variance because I can't say, well, I disagree with you, staff, I'm going to bring forward a special use permit. No, that's not the right application. This is a variance application. So we as developers or planning consultants can't pick and choose what kind of application we want to bring forward. That application is governed by this code. And this code is very specific that there's only three items, as I recall, that you have flexibility on where you can come forward with a site plan review. Other than that, it would be a variance. And I'm just saying, I believe there would be projects out there where it's not really a variance that you're looking at, it's good project planning, and that it ought to be based on the eight or 10 findings for a special use permit rather than the four specific findings for a variance.
Okay, great, Ken. Thank you. I appreciate the explanation and debate.
Sure, you're welcome.
That was good, good.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Any other commissioners have questions?
I have a question for staff on, I was looking through some of the changes in the mixed-use section, and I do see some things that I don't know if we had talked about before. This is the section that we've been talking about, that I think was one that Angela was, had suggested at first, which allows flexibility similar to what I think that Ken is asking Is this, how, what was the conversation that we had about this last time and the time before that? If I remember correctly, well, we took out pedestrian amenities, but basically this says you can vary what the requirements are for the density as well as building orientation with a site plan review. To me, that's pretty, basically that says that all the standards we have for density and building orientation can be thrown out with only a site plan review. And when did that go from special use permit to site plan review? To me, this is concerning and something we've talked about before, and I think we should talk about again.
That came up at the last workshop to go from special use permit to site plan review, and we explained at that time, site plan review is an administrative decision, so it actually would never come to planning commission. It goes from the administrator being Fred Tournier. That would, if that is appealed, it goes to the hearing officer, and if that can be appealed, to city council. So a site plan review does not come to planning commission?
Right. So I'm wondering why we, no, I understand the distinction.
Okay.
And that's important. And I wonder why we went from a special use permit to a site plan review because that's a pretty big change. That's some of the basic tenants of the TODs is building orientation and the density, and to be allowed to vary that with a site plan review. I mean, we were just having discussion about variances, you know, if your project, you know, if you would like to change building orientation or density, something that's required in the TOD, then you can apply it for a variance. Well, this not only isn't a variance, it isn't a special use permit, it's with administrative review. And to me, this seems a little, to me, this seems too flexible.
Okay.
And not the direction that we were going when we talked about this. I think, gosh, the long discussion we had about this was maybe even like six months ago. I don't know if any of the other commissioners remember.
And maybe we had it down wrong. We had it down to go to a site plan review, and I, we can switch that back.
Okay. I mean, I don't know what the other commissioners feel, but in my mind, this, I'm not comfortable with, I mean, to me, one of the building orientation is the central tenants of the TOD, and I think that's something that we should not vary. I feel that's one of the basic things that makes a TOD, you know, walkable and pedestrian. And I don't think we should vary that even with an SUP, much less a site plan review.
And for the record, Angela Foose, just to add to what I recall, and I think you're right, it was about six months ago when we had this discussion on this, and I think the compromise on this was that we did not include the northern portion of South Virginia TOD or East Fourth Street in this.
Okay, so, and Midtown, I think, but that's.
And Midtown's totally separate, so that's not included.
So, so how does, and I remembered that too, and I went and looked at the Fourth Street section. How is there something in the Fourth Street section that preempts this, this, this piece to where you couldn't vary building orientation with, in this case? where you couldn't vary building orientation with, in this case, a site plan review, which I think actually should have been special use permit? Because I didn't see anything, I didn't see, I don't know if, Angela, if you see it in there for East Fourth?
On the, on page 122 is East Fourth. For parcel frontages located adjacent to East Fourth Street, a minimum 75 percent for all other, and for all other parcels, a minimum of 50 percent of the total street front shall be comprised of building. So this is more specific, and that, let me just make sure I'm in the right place.
But that's not frontage.
So this is an MU, so the MU is the base zoning standards. If it's more specific in the overlay, then that trumps the base zoning.
Right, but I don't think it is, because it doesn't say frontage. Oh, it does say, okay, but still.
So we can specify that in the East Fourth Street transit corridor?
I mean, you would have to say something, that this is not subject to the exceptions to standards as indicated on, you know, whatever it is, page 92.
So to go back to page 92, it is specifically not included, so the East Fourth Street TOD and the South Virginia North Section TOD are specifically not included in that. However, okay, thank you for that on the East Fourth Street piece. However, it's regional centers, was regional centers in there before? Because that's a.
Regional centers were in there before, and we were specifically directed by city council to not touch regional centers.
Okay, but this is a change, this is a significant change to regional centers allowing variances to density and orientation with a site plan review. That's a.
Right, I'm sorry, I thought discussion was we were going back to special use permit, that'll be.
So my question was, did we have regional centers in here before for allowing exceptions to the standards for regional centers?
With a special use permit. Yes. Before, it was everything with a special use permit.
I'm sorry.
Pre-existing code, or existing code now, are all TODs and all regional centers were allowed with a special use permit variation from land use intensities and building orientation?
No, I think building orientation is new. It was land use intensities with a special use permit. So maybe we should take regional centers out of this piece if the council did not want changes to regional centers? So I'm on page 92.
We had a miss, at one point, the number and the section were incorrect in code, so we had A6. If you look at earlier versions of the code prior to this amendment, it was A7, I'm sorry, it was A6 building orientation, that was switched to A6 pedestrian amenities, it should have been switched to A7 building orientation, so that's a cleanup of a previous text amendment. It was, it's always been building orientation, other than the last text amendment, which made an error on reversing the section.
Okay, so, but it should be special use permit, not site plan review?
It should be special use permit, at least for regional centers, and then I guess it would be up for discussion from planning commission to me.
Okay, I appreciate those clarifications. I am still uncomfortable with building orientation change. I mean, to me, that's one of the central things to TODs, and I'm not comfortable with that. I don't know how the rest of the commissioners feel about that, so. And I know this is something we did, you know, sort of hashed out a little bit at some point.
Claudia, I thought when we talked about these site plan reviews, was that to speed up the process also?
It was cost and time, yes.
Yes, so I, again, I thought I remembered that's why we put in, agreed on the site plan review, was so somebody could make that decision without the contractor or whatever, you know, having to go all through the process of a SUP.
The cost, the fee is being reviewed right now by the Building and Enterprise Committee with a recommendation going to city council, which will be to reduce the fees. So the fees are going to be very similar between a site plan review and a special use permit. So I would say the bigger difference is going to be the 30 versus 65 days. But then, I think that, as Commissioner Stapleton mentioned, the bigger issue is what's the more appropriate avenue?
Mr. Chairman, as I recall, we did it, costs not necessarily being dollar amounts paid for by developers in their application fees, but cost not only to our staff, but the time process, there is a dollar amount that goes along with the time process, and that's why we pulled East Fourth Street out and North Virginia out, because we wanted tho, we, as a group of planning commissioners, asked to maintain control of those two for building orientation. But the rest, we had agreed on at that time, as I recall, to let staff handle them as a review. And that was for efficiency for both the community and for staff.
I remember that, I don't remember the details of that conversation six months ago, I remember we talked about this at length, I remember we talked about this in terms of the Midtown Plan at length, but I think in this instance, I think the intent was to do a special use permit, I could remember wrong. Regardless of that, I think that this is, that's a pretty big allowance with just a site plan review, and I'm not sure if that's the right policy that we want with not having oversight for a change that important from the planning commission.
But again, I thought we did the site plan review so that the contractor and the planner would sit down and go over, and then, if there was a big question mark, like we had the discussion before, then they could go with the special use permit or variance. But again, I, you know, I agree with Commissioner Wieske, I think we did it so we could speed up the process for the contractor. Wasn't, it didn't have anything to do with.
Mr. Chairman, I believe, and it was close to a year ago this time, because Commissioner Romeo, Chairman Romeo at the time, was adamant about if we do this and the developer, the applicant, doesn't agree with what staff is doing, that the applicant brings it before the planning commission for review, which would be an SUP. Instead, we're hearing that it would go to a hearing officer and then to city council on, through appeals process, right?
Correct.
So.
And at the hearing officer, and Jonathan can jump in if I'm wrong here, he will, the hearing officer typically just looks to see if staff made an error, if we abused our discretion in the review.
Okay. Which would probably be a little bit different than bringing it before planning commission. I mean, if staff did their job and they have done it right, the applicant could still appeal it to city council to determine whatever variables city council wanted to review at that time, I guess.
So commissioners, did we want to change that?
Can I recommend we go through the other comments, and you can all ponder that one for a few minutes as we're.
Sure.
Going through the other comments that were brought up? I'm sensing that you need to think about that one for a few minutes. So let's see if I got all of Angela and Ken's comments. I don't think we had anything in the land use tables. No.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Wieske, Claudia, can I, as you're flipping for the next page, can I make a comment that, to, in response to Angela Foose's comment and Commissioner Stapleton's comment about a project we saw last month? And I did make a statement during the meeting, during that agenda item, it's a multifamily piece of property that wanted a variance for the 10-foot walkway going through it near Virginia Lake, and I said, if it was a single-family residence, would they still be required to have that 10-foot walkway? And the answer from Vern was yes, because of the size of the property. The question that I presented in the discussion that I was having was a single-family residence on a single piece of property. If that entire piece of property, 300 feet long and whatever footage wide you want to make it, had a, was one parcel with one house on it, that single-family residence, in my opinion, should not have to have a 10-foot walkway going through the middle of it. But if you started to subdivide that and make it multifamily, and you've already got pathways through it, walkways through it, drive aisles through it, then yes, there should be a 10-foot walkway, and that's why I didn't vote in favor of that request. Okay, so there is a slight difference in what was being talked about last month, when single-family use and a single owner of that property is different than multifamily, multi-use, okay? I just wanted to clarify that.
Okay. On page 86 of the ordinance, Angela corrected my math, and I should have rounded down to five feet. So five foot under, on page 86, at the very bottom, minimum obstruction-free sidewalk width of five feet. And that should add up to 18. Oops.
Claudia, should that be five and a half feet?
That's what we had. Five, eight, and four, oh, because we have four feet, six inches. Six inches, that's what the original wording was.
And that equals 18.
You're right. So there was a change originally in the workshops of switching that five feet, Angela and Ken, there was a discussion in the workshop to switch the five feet, six inches.
Angela Foose for the record, so we're talking about six inches. What if on page 87, item three, instead of four feet, six inches, we just did four feet? So you still have 18 feet total?
And I think those inches were going all over the place at the workshop, so I would agree that the five feet for the sidewalk and four feet for the back of sidewalk to the building would be correct.
Did you say five feet and four feet?
Yes.
Because now you're at 17.
Bad at math on the fly.
We'll stay at six feet.
Right, I'm sorry, six feet.
Six feet, okay.
Yes, yes. Then we'll come back to page 92 in the SUP versus site plan review. I would agree that regional centers should stay at special use permit. Page 116, right now, restaurants, bars, and retail are a, have no parking requirement. I would actually agree with Angela's comments to establish a maximum, which would limit, we have had a couple developers come in trying to put in more than code, so I would appreciate that going in to cap it at standard code.
I'm sorry, say that one more time, Claudia, please.
So currently, restaurants, bars, and retails in this area, in the northern section, which is Regency to Moana, I believe, have no parking requirement, it's zero if you're going to build a restaurant, bar, or retail. We have had a couple developers come in with new development who want to exceed standard code. So say they're required zero, but they are looking at their standard code, or it's a national company that requires a certain amount of parking, and say standard code would require 50 spaces, they want to put in 60. So this would limit them to no more than code. So it'd give them the flexibility between zero and capping it at code, standard code.
Why, why do we want that type of a constraint? If they, if they, a national operation has a business plan in history that shows they need X amount of parking spaces, and if the standard, if the answer is, because it's a TOD corridor, I respect that answer, okay? But if a national company comes in and they've got history and it says, "We need 60 spaces for this business to be successful, 50 may or may not cut it," why do we want to restrict them?
Because it's a TOD corridor.
Thank you.
There is, there are certain policies and best practices for TOD corridors to encourage a certain type of development, to support our infrastructure and our goals of development patterns.
Okay.
I have a question.
Thank you.
Commissioner Reno, so this concerns me. We're going from zero to code. I think we shouldn't even go all the way up to code, maybe half of what code standards are. And the reason I'm saying that is because we don't want a lot of parking in the TOD corridors. I mean, that's what we're trying to get away from. So maybe there's a middle ground there, where, look, we're going to let you go and vary up to, or go up to, half of what the standard code would be for that land use. That's my thought, but we don't want a lot of parking lots within the TOD corridors.
I just wanted to bring up, I do support that, and when I think of areas like Midtown or something like that, but this also extended down towards the Atlantis. And so there was that section there that I think that it may be appropriate to get up to code, so just a thought.
North of the Atlantis, north of Moana.
Okay.
There's one large vacant parcel in there you may all be thinking of.
Commissioner Stapleton, I think that Claudia's statement was important, that there's certain things that make a TOD a TOD, and that if I'm interpreting what she said correctly, and that this is one of them that we have to think about, I would just add that building orientation is another, in my opinion. But I agree with the concerns of Commissioner Reno, and I think that it is still a TOD. If it wasn't a TOD, then, you know, I mean, maybe Moana, you know, Regency to Moana shouldn't be a TOD, but we have decided that it is. And if it is going to be a TOD, I think that we want to be careful just with even, you know, going up to code. So my concern with this earlier was just that this wasn't housekeeping, this is an important policy discussion, but I am open to having a policy discussion on it, so.
To move on, we'll come back to that one, we're pondering that one also for a while. On page 117, we've got architecture and site layout, the issue of whether we should, on parcels that are 300 feet in width or more, shall provide a 10-foot wide pedestrian walkway through the site to properties or right-of-way located to the rear of the site as determined by the administrator. This was originally put into code specifically geared towards larger hotel casino projects, definitely geared towards commercial, multifamily was also considered, single-family definitely was not considered with this regulation. I would say it was definitely focused towards hotel casino and larger mixed-use and commercial developments, if that helps you.
Commissioner Olivas, I guess I'm wondering in practicality, how many single-family residence lots are there in, in these areas that are greater than 300 feet in the first place?
Well, I guess technically anybody could buy one of the larger ones and build a home on it. It's an allowed use.
Really? I thought, and we can't, we don't do single-family residential in Todd.
We added it back in.
I mean, you still couldn't have a, you couldn't have a hu- a huge, you couldn't have, you couldn't have, you couldn't have a single-family residential development on a parcel that big with the density requirements in the Todd. I mean, you, you can't do that. So I, I think it's a mood issue, right?
I'm sorry, and I have to correct what I just said. In the South Virginia Transit Corridor, it's a special use permit for a single family. It was added back in in East Fourth Street as an allowed use.
Single-family residential?
In East Fourth Street, yes. And that was, there was a property owner that came.
I don't understand that, but maybe that's a whole nother discussion.
Yeah. Ken wanted to make a comment here.
For the record, Ken Crater, my comment is rather than the 10 feet, why not be consistent with the rest of the code, which basically says on the actual sidewalk in, in a street, it's six feet, because the other eight feet's for street furniture and the like, and four feet for space in front of a restaurant for tables or displays. In my mind, six feet is still a great sidewalk in terms of walkability, because I lived in a neighborhood for years on Ridge Street with six-foot sidewalks, and two people could be walking one direction, and a third person could come the other way, and no one would have to steer, you know, walk away. So maybe we just need to look at the width, maybe six feet is more appropriate, and then it's consistent with the sidewalk width on the actual street, which is going to carry more pedestrian traffic than a sidewalk going through a site anyway.
But aren't we talking about 10 feet in the middle of the?
Currently, the code says 10-foot wide pedestrian walkway through the site.
Yeah.
But you can reconsider.
If I recall our conversation last month, Vern stated clearly that it doesn't necessarily have to be one sidewalk that's 10 feet wide. It could be a combination thereof between two sidewalks, or that equaled 10 feet, because the option came up that a five-foot sidewalk could be placed on either side of the main roadway that was in discussion, and if a five-foot was put on both sides, or a four-foot and a six-foot, it probably wouldn't have come before us.
And we can add wording to clarify that, so the question doesn't come up in future projects. You can reconsider the 10 feet as well as, as Ken said.
I'm okay leaving it the way it is, because I think there's enough option and variable in there that it, that a sidewalk can be split, so you've got two five-foot sidewalks and, and, or, or a combination of a six and a four, whatever, and, and you're fine. If you guys want to change the overall width of it, discuss it, you know? Otherwise, let's move on.
Commissioner Reno, so, I mean, I, I agree with Commissioner Wieske, but I think the question here was non-residential development, right? I mean, that's what we were getting at is, is it going to be required on a non-residential lot? Sorry.
I think the question was if, is it going to be required on a residential lot? I haven't heard anybody entertaining the thought of it's going to be commercial.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, on a residential lot, yes, that on a non-residential lot, that it would be required. So, I mean, I'm okay with on a residential lot, it not being required, if that makes sense.
I am too, as long as it's a single family. If it's a multi-family, and then I'm, I consider that to be same as commercial.
I see where you're coming from.
I think I made it clear earlier that I'm comfortable with leaving it as it is, which I think we just talked about single-family, and we're talking about multi-family here for residential, so.
And just an idea on, um, single-family, Plumline Crossing is single-family. And that does have a walkway through it.
I think the issue is the density, not, I mean, Plumline Crossing is, is single-family, but it's a more, it's more de- it's at a higher density. So I think that's what it comes down to, is the density. And I think on Todd corridors, you're not going to have a, even if you have single-family, it's at a higher density.
Would you like to add clarification that it can be broken down from one 10-foot to two fives, or a six and a four, and?
I would, I would like to see that. I think that's fair and reasonable. And it makes sense design-wise, as long as it's not less than a, than, you know, whatever we decide tonight, whether it's two fives, or if the minimum width is four feet.
Can, so that, so then you could, the 10 feet could be split up into two five feet, but in different areas? So instead of one wide one, you're going to break it up even further? And I would just say, when we were talking about the project that Angela brought, one of the issues we were talking about was safety, and I really think in terms of safety and, I think that a 10-foot wide creates a, it's a bigger space, and there's more visibility, and, and in terms of being walk, I just think about this in my neighborhood, where we've got essentially blocks broken up like this with alleys, and if they were five-feet paths, as opposed to, how wide's an alley? Is an alley?
20.
Okay. Well, I mean, 10 is smaller, 5 is even smaller, and I think it makes a space that's a lot less of a, uh, it's a lot less safe of a space, and in terms of, you know, the smaller it is, the, I, I don't know how to articulate this, but I think it makes it a lot less safe if you've got a smaller five-foot space, and I don't know if that's a consideration that, I just think that's a consideration we need to think about if we're going to make that change.
I think it's going to be, it still depends upon what the project is, and, and that's what it boils down to. So I kind of agree with Commissioner Wieske that, you know, can be divided, but I wouldn't want a seven-foot and a three-foot, you know, with a.
So a minimum, a minimum width of?
Four feet. One side or one section being four feet.
Just to clarify on that too, and I missed the second part of that project, I believe the second time it came back. That was, there were, that was also on separate sides of a street. I mean, would this be, this could open this up to be two, two five-footers 100 feet apart too. So would that be the intent, or is that acceptable, or are we talking about separate sides of a driveway?
Commissioner Wieske, for the record, I, I believe that they should, and I'm, I'm not sure of the wording, and so anybody jump in, including Claudia, or, or Ken, or Angela. But I, my intentions are that if you're going to split that 10-foot sidewalk, it be across the same drive aisle, so that if you have a central drive aisle going through the property, cutting across the property, one side of it is six-foot wide, the other side is four-foot wide, or you have two five-foot, but it's not a five-foot sidewalk here, and 250 feet to the east is a separate five-foot wide sidewalk. So it's, it's paralleling each other with a drive aisle between it. And then Claudia, I'm not, I could draw you the picture, and you know what I'm saying, but I don't know how to word it.
I understand what you're saying. I'm not sure, from my professional opinion, I don't know if that's the best level of detail for design. I'm, I'm visualizing a, a pattern that, that has maybe two pedestrian corridors going through it, with, with houses fronted. Plumline Crossing, for instance, has a couple of corridors going through it with the front doors facing that, and driveway access to the rear. So I'm not sure that level of detail is going to, it may, it may put an undue burden on, on some of the designs coming through.
I understand exactly what you're describing, and that's houses facing each other with a common green belt between them versus a drive aisle, and so you would have the similar situation, but instead of a drive aisle, now you've got a green belt.
Right. And you may want to separate pedestrians from vehicles.
What we're talking about is a specific project as a description, for point of discussion right now, but the green belt discussion is, is very important, because some of our cluster style housing going on could have this same, same configuration also.
Right.
And so I would probably have to think about that a little bit more to help, you know, get the right words put on paper for the description, but at least I believe we're all on the same page right now. And I don't know if, I mean, we can certainly try and resolve it right now, but I don't know that we can get all of the potential configurations put in place.
I would really like it if we could get through it tonight, as would a couple of people who are watching this closely.
So would I. It's already been two years for me.
So.
Can I make a comment on the widths? Just a suggestion, rather than a five and a five, or a four, a six, I would say either 10 feet or two six-foot sidewalks, because six feet is a really comfortable width for a sidewalk.
And that, that's, that's a suggestion I was ready to make, was you could have two sidewalks, a minimum width of, of, the narrowest be six feet. So you could either have one 10-foot, or you could have two sidewalks, and the minimum would be six feet, which means you'd have overall a 12 feet between the two walks, but you'd have that nice, wide, comfortable walkway that gives you that safer, secure feeling, you're not having to step off into the, the rock landscape, the, the sand, the dirt, the grass, the whatever.
Maybe further that language, just say separated by a drive aisle or a green belt type, with, with no additional construction in between.
And I would go so far as to say a distance too, within close proximity, within 30 or 40 feet, or some distance between the two of them. You're only required to have one 10-foot sidewalk through one of these lots. So if they want to put additional sidewalks, additional places, that's fine, but, you know, if, if you're going to split it into two six, and I like that idea, then they have to be within close proximity with nothing obscuring in between them. I mean, maybe trees, but no, no buildings, yes.
Mr. Chair?
And maybe, sorry.
I guess I'm failing to see why, if, if six-foot is a comfortable sidewalk, and you have a, a multi-use parcel, why constrain them to having it close? It may work to have them not close together, because this is a wide sidewalk that's comfortable to walk. I mean, if it, it'd be one thing to have a, a three-foot sidewalk, you know, way off there, and then another seven-foot one, but if it's two large sidewalks, why constrain them to be close together? And I'm open to hearing ideas why.
Well, I, I think that the reason is for safety. I mean, that was the reason, if you have these bigger sidewalks, then it's a better safety, safer corridor is really what's happening there.
But we agree six-foot is a good-sized sidewalk that's safe to walk on. So if you have two of those, then why do they have to be in a certain distance to each other?
And I would say the intent would support what Commissioner Wusley is saying. If you've got a 300-foot wide parcel, the intent is to allow pedestrian circulation through the site. So if you're going to have, if you've got 300 feet, you want to have as many opportunities for those pedestrians to walk through the property, rather than having to go all the way around, which further encourages them to get in a car, and et cetera, et cetera. So if you have the 300 feet, the intent of it would be to spread them out as much as possible, to provide as much opportunity for pedestrian circulation.
I need a clarification. Are we talking about two six-foot sidewalks on the same corridor going through the site on either side of a street, or are we talking about allowing separate corridors or walkways through the site that each could be six feet?
That's exactly what we're discussing.
I believe now that's where the conversation has switched to.
But the original intent was actually just six-foot on side of a road, not to have, like, then different walkways through the site.
No, not necessarily a side of the road, it just, it had to be a 10-foot walkway.
Or a green belt.
But, but not to have now two instead of one.
I think what we're doing is envisioning the project that was before us, because we have a mental picture of that. And that's where the conversation of the green belt has, has come in, and.
And I'm picturing about four parcels right now.
Yeah. And I can, I'm.
And some are corner, some are corners, some are through lots, there are all sorts, and there are all sorts of different shapes.
And I'm not so sure that Commissioner Wusley isn't, isn't right, especially after hearing Claudia's discussion of what the intent of these walkways are, and is to, to create as many potential crossings of, of, you know, through crossings for this property, proposed property, whatever it, the shape is, as long as it's 300 feet long or longer, for access points, so that, that the residents within can move on their walkways versus modale.
So right now I have it down as one 10-foot, or two six-foots? Feets? Foots? Okay.
I'm okay with that. Commissioner Wieske?
Going once, going twice, okay. Landscape code sections stated on 120 and 121 would be removed, and it would revert to MU base zoning. And that, other than our. Yes, thank you.
I'm sorry, where on 120 and 121?
Um, middle of the page on 120, and bottom of the page 121, the district landscaping requirements.
Oh, I see.
And then as well on page 124.
So that this reverts to the table that's on?
That's back in MU. Um.
Page 91.
Sorry.
Okay. I think that's a, I think that's a, I think that's a change. It's not a, um, I think that's taking it down then to 5% from 10%, so maybe was the intention different with these?
This was, the one in the mixed-use base zoning, on page 91, there was a discussion to have that tiered landscape requirement put in there. And so we had remnant ones throughout all of the overlays. So there was a discussion to make it consistent and have the tiered set up, and we put the numbers in. On page 91, they were discussed, there was never, I'm going to say, I don't think there was any agreement on the numbers at the last workshop, but this is what we, kind of the, the in-between ground. Okay. All right, so going back to page 86, we're going with six feet, and I'm going to study some additional flash, flashcards tomorrow, I promise. Page 92. SUP would, will remain for regional centers. And then still the discussion of land use intensities and building orientation. I didn't hear any discussion whether we wanted to extend that beyond land use intensities and building orientation. So I'm, I'm guessing we want to keep it at those two, and do we want to keep it at special use permit, or change it to a site planner view? Again, the difference is, site planner view is administrative, it's 30 days. Again, the difference is, site plan review is administrative, it's 30 days, slightly less expensive ultimately, but not a big difference there. And it would never come to planning commission. It would go on appeal to the hearing officer, and then on to city council if it's appealed from there. Special use permit is 65 days, similar in price, and would come to planning commission at all times.
This was the one that I brought up, Commissioner Stapleton, and I think it should be a special use permit, but actually, I, I don't think that we should, in my mind, building orientation is one of the key tenants of a TODD-like parking and density, and that it's not, really just not something that should be varied. And so, I know the proposal from the consultants was to have a more special use permits when there were things that didn't work with their developments, but I feel strongly that building orientation, that if you're changing building orientation, you know, if you're orienting a building not towards the street, that's it, it's just, it's no longer, you know, pedestrian-oriented. I mean, I think that's just, that's very basic, and I don't think that's something that we should vary, so I'm not in support of that. So I would be in support of striking building orientation from there. But in addition, I do believe it should be special use permit instead of site plan review.
Commissioner Stapleton, Commissioner Wieske for the record. Commissioner Stapleton, why building orientation? And what makes you think that staff who has really been the anchor behind our TODD corridors and their development is not going to push their standards as hard as we at the planning commission level do?
Well, to answer the second part of your question, I think that what we see all the time is that if it's not in code, you know, staff doesn't have to back them up. You know, they don't have the policy on the books to back them up, so that's why I think it's important to be, to have that on there, so that staff has that to back them up, if that's something important that we want. I think building orientation is, building orientation is if it's on the street, and if the front door is on the street, and if it's not, then that takes away, you know, when you're walking by, and you know, it's like turning your back, right? It's no longer, it's the back of a building, or it's a parking lot, or it's the side of a building, and it's, that's it right there, it takes away the, you know, pedestrian connection with that building, and, you know, the walkability. To me, that's basic.
If, and I don't disagree with that. And maybe I didn't ask my question right, but that's what, that's what staff is and has promoted from day one with TODD corridors. And if an applicant, whether an applicant has building orientation, whether they go for an SUP or not, if they disagree with staff, they come before us, and we try and make the findings for it, right? To move that door off of the front of the street or the building orientation, rotated, whatever. If we, if they don't agree with our decision that night, they still go to city council. It's the same process with a site plan review, because if they don't agree with staff after the site plan review, then they go before the hearing officer, the hearing officer makes sure that staff followed all the protocol and applied all the right codes and ordinances. And if the applicant doesn't like it, then they go to city council. It's the same process, except it's a shorter process, and by being shorter, it's less expensive for the city and for the applicant to get a final answer, which is city council making a decision.
I think we're talking about how do we make the decision to vary orientation, right? What's the correct mechanism or process for doing that? So if it's a site plan review, then staff can vary that just with their discretion. I think, in my mind, as I said earlier, orientation is one of the key tenants to making a TODD, and that that really should only be varied if there's a hardship. So in my mind, this should be in there without a special use permit or a site plan review, that this should be one of those few, and there's not too many, where, yeah, maybe there's circumstances when we should make an exception, but it's really going to be a hardship in terms of the lot size or some other, you know, you know, not sort of regularly occurring circumstance.
Okay, then maybe Claudia, a question for you. If I brought a project forward to you and asked for a change in the building orientation, what process would you use to grant my request or deny my request?
Currently, I would use the special use permit process, because that's what the code has in it right now.
Okay.
And we would review whether it's site plan review.
But on a site, on a site plan review, what process would you use?
Site plan review is similar to, almost the same review that staff does for a special use permit, the findings are slightly different, and we would analyze those findings. We generate a letter and post that on the website, as well as send it to the applicant, and they have a 10-day appeal period to bring that to the hearing officer, to appeal to the hearing officer.
Okay, so you have a process of findings that you also have to make on a site plan review, similar to, maybe not exactly, but similar.
Not exactly the same, but similar to special use permit.
Are our findings more stringent than what staff's are?
They're different. I can read them too, hold on.
Okay. I mean, Commissioner Stapleton, I hope, because I think we're saying the same thing in our concerns, I know our concerns are the same thing, because we've discussed them over the last several months. So maybe, this is helping me, I hope.
Yeah, and I see where you're going. I just think this is one of those instances where this is going to be something that, you know, staff will be pushed for, and what they need is they need to have it in the code to fall back on, and they need this language, and then a variance and oversight from us. And I think that the findings for the variance are more stringent probably than, I'm going to guess, what Claudia's going to read.
Okay.
And I think this is something special that needs the oversight of the planning commission, as opposed to, I mean, I know staff does their best, but a lot of times they need the code and they need us to fall back on to be able to make decisions, you know, in terms of what a developer wants versus what's, you know, going along with the master plan in the best interest of the community.
Before I read the findings, I also want to remind you that from the last workshop, we narrowed down what TODDs, this is even applicable in. So we're only talking about North Virginia Street TODD, Mill Street TODD, West Fourth Street, and the southern section of South Virginia. So this is the only place.
And regional centers.
And regional centers.
And I think that's important because I don't.
Yes, thank you for catching that. So this does not apply to the northern section of South Virginia, East Fourth. Is that it? I think that's it. Okay, so the findings for a site plan review, the proposed project is consistent with all requirements of this title. Adequate facilities and services exist or are planned to serve the project. The project represents an integrated development with adequate and safe pedestrian, vehicular, and bicycle circulation. The structure has been designed such that the window placement and height do not adversely affect the privacy of existing residential uses. The applicant adequately mitigates, the applicant adequately mitigates the traffic impacts of the project. Adequate screening and buffering are provided to minimize impacts to adjacent uses.
I think that's some pretty, I mean, that's, that's not sort of the larger impact criteria that, that I think, I don't know how to articulate it, but I think that that's a much different criteria than you would get in a variance and even SUP.
It's not as site-specific, especially as permit findings.
Right, right. I think it, I think it allows a lot more flexibility than we want on this one.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Wieske, I, after listening to that, the findings on a site plan review that staff looks at, and looks at ours, it may be important for us to, to have it, because we're talking about regional centers. The North Virginia TODD doesn't concern me as much, the Mill Street TODD, I mean, we're talking more industrial areas, the South Virginia TODD is fairly well-developed, or at least programmed for development, based upon existing construction. The West Fourth Street TODD is kind of a wide-open mix, and maybe we should have a special use permit in those areas, at least in half of them. So I'm kind of wanting to listen to some more conversation.
Mr. Chair. I like the ideas of site plan reviews, and, and maybe I'm not comfortable yet with them, with, with the amount of wiggle room there is, with things that could get by that potentially we wouldn't want to see. And I hate to say it, but it's like, I like the idea of it, but maybe not the way it sits right now. And I would like to maybe discuss, could there at least, could we narrow it down to where areas that we are comfortable doing site plan reviews? And seeing how they go for those areas? Or?
If I could also add, it's on our lengthy to-do list to amend, to bring forward an amendment to the findings of a site plan review. That is definitely one of the sections that staff believes need, that needs updating. So it may be something that you may, you may want to consider leaving it as a special use permit now, with the recommendation of an amendment and update to the site plan review process, and reconsider it once the findings are updated.
I could definitely support that.
My comment would be, the one thing I don't like about the site plan review is it goes right to city council, so it kind of bypasses the planning commission, and that's really what we're supposed to be doing, before it gets to city council, so, you know, that's why I could agree with the special use permit.
Can I ask a question, just for clarification? But it only goes to city council if it's appealed, right?
Yes, appealed through the hearing officer.
It only goes to staff for approval, unless someone appeals it.
Correct.
And then it still is more steps to city council, just for clarification.
And it is noticed the same way as a special use permit. We still send out the postcards and post the site.
Question for Claudia. Why is that? Is that because you feel that if it's, if staff is, can't make the findings, that at that point, it would be too lengthy to go through the planning commission and then the city council?
No, and Jonathan can jump in here if I'm incorrect, but I believe administrative decisions per NRS have to be appealed through the hearing officer. I'm pretty sure it's NRS or the charter. Jonathan's going to look into that. And then.
Claudia, we, since we had one commissioner, I guess, take a.
Recess?
Break here, yeah, can we take about a three or four-minute break?
Do you want a six-minute break or an eight-minute? Oh, no, I'm just kidding, sorry.
Can we split those in two?
It's only if we have two.
Two, three-minute breaks? It's at least in Title 18, I think it might also be an NRS, that the appeal of an administrative decision goes to the hearing officer. I know that's at least stated in the appeal process in code, I'm not sure if it's any further up than that. That was the last question I left with. So I think.
You know, and if I, because Commissioner Stapleton, and I think Commissioner Wieske, both, but I think when we said to go to the site plan review, again, that was to try and speed things up, and, but maybe, again, special use permit is what we really need to go to.
So we're going special use permit?
Is everybody kind of agreeing with that?
Mr. Chairman, question for Claudia real quick, Commissioner Wieske. A question that I have in my mind is why, and I believe I know the answer, I'd just like to get it on the record. It takes longer to go through the SUP process through planning commission with an appeal to city council than it does on a site plan review to an appeal to an administrative hearing officer and city council?
I think it's probably faster through the planning commission.
So if there's, if there's a disagreement between the applicant and the staff member, and it gets appealed, it's actually going to take longer to go through that process than if they would have started with an SUP?
Potentially. It may end up being about the same. It's going to be 30 days for your site plan review, and then the hearing officer is sometimes up to 45 days to get onto that schedule, because there's only one hearing officer.
Okay.
And so that's a, that's a scheduling thing, where the special use permit is going to be 65, and then about 30. It's close.
Okay. Because I do specifically remember, in all the workshops we've had, and in all the discussions we've had, is what can we do to help expedite the processes for the applicants, the developers, whatever you want to label them as? And I really think that's, what I remember is that's what we were trying to do with the site plan review, but that's only when the site plan review works and there's no disagreement. And because of that, I'm, the timeframes being the same, I'm gonna, I'm going along with Commissioner Stapleton and Chairman Kaufman now, that I would rather see it with an SUP rather than a site plan review. No reflection on staff, it's a timing issue, and I'm trying to help the applicant, the development community out.
Thinking about it, if, to go through the full appeal process to council, it's going to be faster through a special use permit.
Okay. Okay. Well, that, that's my reasoning and my logic.
Mr. Chair. I completely agree with that reasoning, and as it sits now, that makes total sense. I just thought for the future, the idea was for small changes that would trigger an SUP, that staff would most likely agree upon with what the applicant would agree upon, so it is, the majority is these little tiny things that maybe shouldn't be discussed, or even brought to council or commission, and so the idea of that 98% of these would not be appealed, and could go through much quicker. And like I said, maybe though we're not there today, maybe we still have to look at the revisions of the, of site plan review findings, but in as of today, I could support the SUP, it's just the idea that in the future, maybe we're not quite there yet. I still like the idea.
And Commissioner Stapleton, the other part of this for me was the building orientation, that I really believe that, that that's something that should not be varied unless it's a hardship. And so for me, I think that building orientation should be taken out of there, and that's something to me that's a real sticking point, so.
Mr. Chair.
Go ahead.
I thought we had discussed. I thought we had discussed certain urban planning situations where a building orientation didn't always have to be to the back. It would still be open, I mean, access may be around the side. And I'm trying to remember if anybody else remembers this conversation. Because initially, I totally agree with you, but then I started thinking about some conversation that we had about...
Page 90.
Okay. But I'm referring more to that, the conversation that we had as far as certain examples. I don't know if you had examples in here.
I don't have examples on page 90. But we did put in, or to the side property line if direct pedestrian access is provided from the primary street frontage and the building is located at the front setback line.
And I'm so glad you brought that up because I don't, I don't, I don't remember that being what we discussed either. Or I had wanted you to elaborate on how that, what situation that would address. An example for Commissioner Wiskey.
Yeah, just that there were some successful examples of how that was used.
Claudia, Commissioner Wiskey, are we confusing midtown diagrams and discussions with TOD corridor diagrams and discussions? Because I know we went into great detail in midtowns.
We did on midtown, and it's, again, midtown is not included in this, nor is East Fourth Street, which I know are our two key areas to not allow variation on these at all, which would not be allowed. I'm trying to think of one that has side entrance that's been built. Maybe the one on Second Street behind Renown? I'm trying to think of other entrances.
And I'm just thinking of building orientation in general. Virginia Commons, which is where David's Bridle, Total Wines, you all know that location. You know, so the buildings were put up to the front setback line. It's a blank wall with art. Is that really the best design? You know where David's Bridle, Total Wines, DSW, across from Home Depot, Target, the shopping center down, the Target down south? So it's on Virginia Street. So it's, it meets the intent by having buildings fronting the street, but there's no doors or windows fronting the street. It's a blank wall.
But, no, I'm talking about, that's a perfect example of where the orientation isn't on the street and it's not pedestrian-friendly at all.
That was built under old code.
Because the orientation is not towards the street.
Right. That was built under the general transit corridor, the GTC, with the predecessor to all the transit corridors. And that allowed, that just said the building towards the front and didn't have that building orientation.
Yeah, that's a great example of a building that's not pedestrian-friendly because it's not oriented towards the street.
That's a great bad example.
Thank you, Angela.
I have the example that Claudia was thinking of. And there was a developer that attended several of the first meetings, again, for the record, Ken Crater. And he developed the commercial retail project on South Virginia Street, just south of California Avenue, kind of across the street from the Starbucks. It's the new strip retail building. And because of the orientation of the lot, he had to orient the buildings towards that side lot line in order to fit his retail project on there. And he spoke up strongly in favor of allowing that option to have your buildings facing the side lot line as long as you have that pedestrian access to the main street. So that's the example that I recall that generated this text that we have in here right now.
And if I can just address that, does everybody know that development? And I think that's another perfect bad example, and I think this is probably where I disagree philosophically maybe with Ken and the developer of that, that that puts a parking lot onto a main street in a TOD corridor. And I think that's a design that, I don't think that that building ever should have been allowed not to be oriented towards Virginia Street. I think that when you look at how Midtown was developed, that was the last property to be leased up. It was the newest development on that corridor. And you were seeing, you know, blighted buildings being transformed into shops and restaurants and bars. And it was only when Midtown was, really got going, that finally he could even get tenants in that, in that building. That was one of the lesser desirable developments, I think, in the Midtown corridor. And I think that, and my personal opinion is that's a great example of where you've broken up the sort of character of Midtown and of something that you don't want.
It's also a very narrow, long, skinny parcel with two frontages. So it was an interesting parcel in and of its own.
And maybe it's an exception to the rule. You know, maybe that's an example where you could get a variance if you could argue that that lot was very small and that it really is, you know, that was the only way to develop it. But I think that's an example of, you know, I think that's a further argument for having, you know, orientation be away from the street only if there's a hardship and having that have a variance.
Variance or a special use?
The variance for the building orientation. I think that was my part of that issue on page 92, that, you know, all of that, right, with a special use permit. But in my opinion, what I was initially saying was that building orientation is something that's so important and elemental to a TOD corridor and to walkability, that that's something that we really should only vary if there's some sort of a hardship or if you absolutely can't make the development work otherwise. That that's something that is just so central to making, you know, a walkable character and, you know, to having, to what a TOD is.
Okay. I think, I think we all agree with you on that. And we talked about making it from a site plan review to, is that the wording you want in it as a variance?
Well, it would be a special use permit if, depending on what you're doing on building orientation. Again, remember, it's just in those specific corridors. It still wouldn't be allowed in East Fourth or northern portion of South Virginia. And so special use permit for land use intensities. And then the, I guess, the discussion right now is, I think we're agreement, I'm hearing agreement through there, through that point. And now we're up to building orientation.
And my suggestion is to take building orientation out of there because by doing that, it would always default to a variance. So by striking building orientation there, for the change for the other to an SUP, but then by striking building orientation, it reverts to, it would only be allowed to be changed with variance.
So you're saying leave the paragraph as it is, just take out building orientation?
Yeah, I think you guys already decided to change that special use permit was the better intent as opposed to site plan review. But then also, right, leave everything else the same, take building orientation out.
Commissioner Wiskey, I think I agree with that because there was no, we haven't come up with good examples of ones I would support. So I'm not saying they wouldn't be out there, but maybe they do have to come before us for a variance to, for us to review it.
And I do think that page 90 is the second part of this discussion on building orientation, that language on page 90. I mean, I don't want to, I know we're talking right now about that paragraph on 92, but I think those go hand in hand.
So the, and the new wording in 90, just using the examples of the buildings we've been discussing, the one in Midtown, the newer one, would be allowed with the wording on page 90, but the one down South Virginia Commons, I think it's called, would not have been allowed.
I don't, I, I need clarification on what this is, on what this is, this language here is doing on page 90. Because I know this is regarding building, and I know we're interrupting the discussion on, we were on page 92.
Well, I think you're right. I think they go hand in hand. So right now, it says, "New buildings on sites under two acres in size shall be oriented toward the primary street frontage." So right now, you have to have your front door facing the street. This allows, it adds in, or to the side property line if direct pedestrian access is provided from the primary street frontage and the building is located at the front setback line. So that allows, your building can be turned toward the side, but it has to be at your setback line, and you have to have a direct pedestrian access, so a separate sidewalk. You can't have them walking down the drive aisle.
So it allows building orientation not to be on the street. And I think what this describes is that property in Midtown that we were just talking about, the one where the parking lot's on the street and the side of the building is on the street, and you have to go into the project as opposed to having the front doors, the front of the project on the street.
And actually, when that one was originally developed, now that I'm thinking about it, it had a front door on Virginia.
And they took it out.
It's still there. I don't believe it's used anymore for the use. It was used when it was a restaurant. It's not used for the dollar loan or whatever's in there.
But still, the businesses there, all of those orientations are to a parking lot that's...
Okay. But what about the subsequent businesses going back down through that building? They don't have a front door. They don't have storefront. They've got to face the parking lot.
Yeah, as long as you have one pedestrian access.
And you have a walkway going down to them. If you get there via bus or your bicycle or roller skates, you've got a walkway to get to the businesses at the backside of that building.
Right. So I think that building is a special exception because that lot is so long and skinny that the argument is, how do you, what type of use are you going to have?
Okay, but let's go back to what your original discussion was, and you wanted it all frontage.
The, we're talking the orientation.
The orientation of the building. You wanted it all to the, to the front street.
Right.
How do you do that?
I don't know how you do that for that lot. I think that...
But you're willing to dictate it in an, in an ordinance?
And that building did meet the intent, did meet that. When it was first constructed, it has that front door on the street, so it would have met that. It would have met it without the, without the side entrance because there is a primary access on the street. It doesn't say you can't have additional ones down the side, but you have to have at least one up in the front.
I mean, I don't, I don't think it really accomplishes that, but it put it, they put a door and it, it, they put a door there and it, it, you know, technically...
See, I think what, in that specific case, you've got a multi-tenant building, and what we're describing on a narrow, skinny lot like that is best suited for a single user or maybe maximum two users. But the person that owns the property decides how many users he's going to put in there. So, you know, we would really be handcuffing that property owner.
Well, and this is, how big is, this is for sites that are two acres or smaller? How big is that site?
Less than two acres. Less than two acres. It might be, around an acre, just over an acre, something like that? It's pretty skinny. It may have even fallen under a narrow lot, 80 feet. It's 80 feet wide.
I think that, I mean, most of the lots that we're talking about don't go back that far. So I think that's a different case. But I think, yeah, what you've got there is you've got a parking lot on the street, and then you've got the side of a building that for all intents and purposes is not oriented towards the street. And I don't think that's what, what we want.
But you have, if you look at example A at the top of the page, that's virtually what you have. You know, in that which, and because of the shape of that.
Mr. Chair. I think one of the things I'm struggling with is the difference between pedestrian access versus driveway access. And, you know, I think there would be a lot of situations that would work that if you have a sidewalk and then a side of a building fronting the sidewalk, and then like a courtyard that you'd walk into that may have been, maybe seating and all that, and then technically the, the entrance of the restaurant is inside that courtyard. But the main pedestrian access is coming, you know, the frontage from the sidewalk, but the main front door entering the building is on the side. I'm trying to remember these examples that we were talking about. And that would work completely in a, in a TOD. But a driveway access, like the building that we're talking about, does not really work or fit the character of that area. Now, once in, I know we're talking Midtown versus outside the, you know, later.
I mean, maybe the solution to this piece is, this piece doesn't address, yeah, this piece allows the orientation to be changed. So maybe on this piece, you know, without, because then if you, in order not to contradict the other piece, the... I mean, here it allows, here it, here it allows the orientation to be to the side.
Correct.
So maybe on this one, you just, you take out or to the side property line.
Maverick Gas Station is the other one that you've seen recently. Those are all, not all, the one up on Stead Boulevard was side-oriented. I knew there was another one you'd seen recently. Sorry. To take out the portion that was added in on page 90?
Well, at least the part that says, "or to the side property line," because allowing it to the side property line then takes away the orientation to the street. So that even that project on Midtown would not, so that even that project in Midtown, you know, technically has a door on the street, but...
Mr. Chairman. Commissioner, what if we would change the wording to be, front streetage may be to the side property line, and you go through that with a variance? So basically, they need to be orientated towards the, towards the street, or they may be to the side with a variance.
You don't need to put in the wording with a variance.
I guess you don't have to put a variance because they can do that anyways.
Right.
Just take it out. Yes, just take it out. And they can have a variance if they, if they have a hardship, they have a hardship.
Just a question for the commission. If we, if we do that and make them do a variance, are we, we are handcuffing them, and do we think that would keep people from coming up with creative ideas for these small lots in these TODs? To the point where they would even go forward with the project or attempt to get a variance? And that's, that's a question. I'm not, I don't know.
I think that what, we keep thinking and keep describing examples in Midtown, which is a two-lane road now. It's not part of our discussion, but it's an example. But when you start thinking about the areas of the TOD corridor that this is going to cover, we're talking four-lane roads, highways, six-lane roads. Think about the size of the lots that are available south of Neal Road or, or even south of Patriot, which is essentially where In-N-Out Burger is. And from there, south. Think about what happens on West Fourth Street going out of town, the size and configurations of those properties. It's different than what we're talking about on, right here, south of California, which is what we're not supposed to be talking about. I can't go along with it, I'm sorry. Because I'm, I've, know of several properties and the size and configurations of them that are in the areas that we're discussing, and it, it does not make a lot of sense. There's no way to that property off of a four-lane road where the speed limits are in excess of 45 miles an hour if you don't have a drive aisle in front of it. It's the only way to get into it. And whether you have sidewalks or not, but depending what the development is that goes in around it, you're going to handcuff the develop, the applicants and developers. I'm, I'm sorry, I can't go along with it.
I actually agree with you, Commissioner Wiskey, and I think that my only, my concern is about orientation. And I think you're absolutely right on bigger lots, you know, and to have, you know, access and some parking. But I, but my main concern was building orientation. And that example on Virginia that Angela gave is the perfect example because the buildings aren't oriented towards the street and it's not walkable at all. And so I think mainly my concern is with orientation and so...
Okay, well, let me, let me throw this one at you. Think of, think of West Fourth Street, west of Keystone, there used to be a Burger King that backed up to the railroad tracks. And then think of what happens west of where that vacant lot is right now. You know, you've got fuel pumps, you've, you've got a trailer sales in an old bungalow-style building. You've got... You've got extremely narrow lots right there that back up, they're, they can't expand. They can't go anywhere. They got the railroad behind them, and, and a four-lane road with, with relatively medium-speed limits on them, that you, you don't have anywhere else to access the property except off of the front of it. And I understand building, the building orientation, and it's important for me too because I have, I, I know of projects that would be even more successful had they had that front door or storefront glass on the major street that they're on versus off to the side or a blank wall with art on it. But, you know, I just, I just don't see it in the areas that we're discussing.
Again, my concern is only for orientation, not for having access or even parking, for like what your example is. And, um, I don't know if that goes on into the secondary TOD where you're talking about, but my concern is only with orientation, so that was my suggestion.
Secondary and primary. It's just on the TODs listed there.
Commissioner Olivas, I, I agree with Commissioner Wieske. This is, I mean, this isn't a walkable area. I mean, it's transit-oriented, and you're riding the bus, and you're getting out, and you access it to the back. And I think the, the bridal boutique and the Total Wine is, I doubt if the developers wanted to build it that way in the first place. So they probably would rather have a side access or something like that. They're forced into it because of the standards at the time. So I think, I think leaving it as is gives them the option, and, and that side orientation, like the building that we've been describing closer here in Midtown, is probably a good orientation and an access for something on Fourth Street or further down on, on Virginia Street. So I, I would prefer to keep this in as it is.
And that was for, on page ninety?
On page ninety, yes.
Mr. Chair, I am struggling going back and forth, and Commissioner Wieske does an excellent point of making, you know, getting this back out and not thinking about a Midtown area that has got its own rules, and to more higher traffic, higher speed, access in and out of those. And this, how it sits now better suits TODs overall than a special area. And going through there, so I think I'm now leaning to the way, just to keep it the way it is.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Reno, after, after Commissioner Wieske explained it, and I knew this, but we, we have this discussion where we're looking in the Midtown, but it is, this is outside, and there's still pedestrian access off of the road. So it does still suit the purpose of a TOD where we have pedestrian access, but we are so far away from these centers that I, I'd say just leave it. Let's leave it as it is.
I, that's, you know, the consensus of the commission. I'm fine with that. I will just say that if the buildings aren't oriented towards the street, it really makes it not walkable and not pedestrian-friendly, and then it, it either isn't a TOD or it shouldn't be a TOD, so... And I, I think we're going from thinking about Midtown to areas that now we've actually put into secondary TODs where this isn't an issue, so...
Okay, so what I'm hearing is page ninety stays the same. Page ninety-two is, stays the same, other than we're switching it from a site plan review to a special use permit. Okay.
Mr. Chairman, for the record, Commissioner Wieske, I'm in favor of Claudia's statement of leaving ninety the way it is and changing ninety-two to SUP.
Commissioner Wieske, I agree.
Okay. Commissioner Reno, are you okay with that, too?
I, I am. Um, you know, it's still, I, I agree with Commissioner Stapleton on, on the orientation. But if we get further out, that, maybe that's another discussion for TODs into the future. So I think it's the way it is. I say we leave it. And I agree, a special use permit is the way to go, because at least that way for the building orientation, they'd have to come before, before us if they want to change it.
Okay.
Okay, so we're all in agreement.
Okay, excellent. I love that. Okay, page one sixteen. The parking for restaurants, bars, and retail in the northern section of the South Virginia Transit Quarter. Right now, the parking standard is zero, and we were having a discussion on putting a maximum amount of parking on there. And it went from fifty percent to standard code, I think is where we left off.
Mr. Chairman? Yeah, see, along with the orientation of the buildings, I agree that, I mean, we wanna not have a lot of parking next to the, the, the TOD. We just don't want a lot of parking down there. We wanted to make it pedestrian-friendly, so that's why I suggested a reduction in the parking, up to a maximum of half of it, uh, from zero. So that's my whole reason. We want more buildings. We want more pedestrians down there. We want less, less cars and, and and less parking. In order to, you know, encourage people to walk down there or to take the bus down there and so forth.
And so this is the area between Regency and Moana?
Mr. Chair, and that's where I struggle with. You know, I completely agree with you, once again, in these areas, the areas that have character, and we want to keep that way. But then, as I think all the way down towards Moana, you know, then it would be appropriate to probably have parking up to normal standard code. And so I see both sides, but I might be leaning towards keeping it standard code.
Ken, you want to make a comment?
Yes, thank you. For the record, Ken Crater. Again, I think you need to consider the area. If you're talking Midtown or those core regional centers, I agree. Uh, the downtown parking requirements, which are half to a third of standard code apply. But in the area between Regency and Moana, as was discussed here, there's still a lot of large parcels down there. And I guarantee, if you can't at least provide standard code parking, you're not gonna have any business going in there whatsoever, because no one's gonna go in and build new retail where you don't have three city blocks behind you with ten thousand people living there. They have to rely upon drive-in traffic. We're just not a built-up urban area yet. So in these outside areas, you have to allow for some parking, or you're not gonna have any development. I mean, that's the bottom line. I've done a lot of development, and that's the first thing people ask is, can I get enough parking on my site to accommodate business? So again, I think you need to keep in context the area that we're talking about. Thank you.
Mr. Go ahead, Claudia.
Sorry, to add on to that, I think the, putting a cap of standard code but allowing zero allows for intensification of a business. So if they build it to standard code now, they're wildly successful, RTC doubles their buses, they can go down to zero. They can always put in that second building in their parking lot if that, if that's what the market demands in ten years.
You know, the other thing, uh, I think a developer or a business that's coming in, they would rather not have, uh, double the parking that they need. But if, if they know, and I think Commissioner Wieske brought it up, there's, there's businesses out there that would want to come in, and this is the parking that they would take to run their business, to be successful, to generate the profits they need to be there. So if you, if, and I, I really agree with Claudia. I think we should either go code, you know, or, or... You know, or, or leave it. I mean, I, and zero's not, I mean, that's not right, but, you know, if you go to code by cutting it in half, and only because I've been in retail for so many years that I... You know, it's the same thing. You always, uh, people go, uh, a restaurant, and if you want to take a look at like, uh, the Outback, you know, if they would have to have fifty percent less, you know, that would almost kill that business. You know, they could not generate the volume they need to do to be successful, so... You know, would be, would be one example I'd use, you know, because it's hard to find a parking spot in there sometimes, as it is today.
Mr. Chairman? Commissioner Wieske, I want to preface this comment that I understand what a TOD is all about, and it does not include parking. It includes using other modals of transportation to get there, being public transportation, bicycles, whatever it is, walking. I mean, in some of these cases, and because of, of our weather or our mindset or a combination thereof, many people in this community still like to get in their car and drive someplace. Claudia, the question is for you, and it, it doesn't fit with TOD, I know. Don't say it doesn't fit after I ask the question. But we, we've thrown the idea around in some workshops when we were talking about a specific part of the middle of town, about some parking structures, high-density parking. The one thing that I don't want to see in these large lots and these developments in this particular area is vast expanses of blacktop. But what if a person wanted to go to full code for parking or exceed it by fifty percent? And we said, "Okay, you've got to reduce the area of parking, but you need to go up two floors." I know it, it, it fights the idea of the TOD, but it compresses and creates density for parking. And if, if it's feasible for the developer to do it, let the developer do it. But we don't have flat, black parking lots taking up space where we want businesses and walkability. Just an idea.
So you're suggesting any parking over standard code would have to be structured?
Yes. And no, I didn't expect the room to be that quiet.
That was a question mark at the end.
Anybody?
Mr. Chair, I agree with you. I don't want to see large blacktop. If, and I don't think the structure's a bad idea, but would that be something that they would want? We'd want to see anyways come before us through a variance? To see how they were gonna do the parking structure along, and how they're gonna orient it in the lot?
Absolutely. The last place I want to see a, a parking garage is right on South Virginia. I want to see the building orientation on South Virginia, and I want to see that parking structure set back, similar to what, um, the Pepper Mill did when they went through and restructured and built their parking garage. They built them to the west side of the property. You know, you don't, you don't really see them. They kind of blend into the structures. And I, I think that we should see them as a planning commission, or whoever the planning commissioners are at that time. I think the planning commission should see it to make sure that it, it blends in and/or just kind of exists without it standing out there. But building orientation is priority one.
So I guess what I'm asking is, if we want to see it anyways, then we, do we need to put it in the wording that they could apply for it in a variance? Or is that just understood?
You can, it's always reversed to a variance on a standard. They can't meet it unless you specifically specify a different route. Um, and I'm just thinking through this, and I'm pretty sure if you put the cap of standard code, I think in ninety-nine percent of the situations, it's gonna come before you. Because if you, if they're providing that much surface parking, they're probably not meeting their FAR. So that's gonna come before you as an SUP. I, I can't think of an instance where it wouldn't, where, where they would be meeting it unless they go structured. If they go structured parking, then, excuse me, um... Then they could potentially meet their FAR, but then they're gonna have building orientation and pedestrian access as well.
Okay, and I'm, and I'm at the, at the eleventh hour. I'm not trying to throw out a rewrite of this, but I... It's just something that's, that came to mind tonight on how to make it work. And if it's, if it's worth it for the developer to go to code or to exceed code, it should come before us, and, and we should know what that building orientation is. And it should be structured parking. It should not be surface parking, because that defeats the purpose. And I, I wouldn't, wouldn't be in favor of surface parking, you know, in excess. And that, then again, it doesn't matter what part of town it is, it defeats the purpose of the TOD.
So putting a maximum on there, it would have to come before you as a variance to exceed that max?
Yes.
And most likely an SUP for the FAR?
Yes. And I, and I, and I would hope that this planning commission or future commissions would look at it and understand that the priority one is still building orientation to the street, and if there's gonna be a structure, it's gonna blend in, and it's gonna be to the back of the structure, and that's not what you're gonna see driving down whatever street it is, whether it's West Fourth Street, or if it's specifically, I know we're not talking West Fourth Street, but if it's this portion of South Virginia, my compliments to the Pepper Mill when they did that, because now it blends in and it just kind of fades away, and you don't know if it's rooms, or casino, or parking.
I'll weigh in, just, um, just as long as the building's oriented to the front and the front edge isn't the parking, I'm okay with parking behind or up high or whatever. And, and I think we could be flexible on the issue of no parking versus a cap on that.
Okay, so I think we've gone through all our pondering questions. Would you like me to review them?
Well, what are we gonna do for this last one? Is that, are we gonna say at code?
Yeah, Commissioner Reno, I would agree to that. The reason, I mean, when you said that, okay, they can build out their building bigger, reduce their parking, I mean, that's what I want. I want more buildings, less parking. And, and as a model, they probably would do that as it starts to densify into these areas. So, you know, I'm fine with it as it is. Or, I'm sorry, up to, to code.
To, to standard code.
To standard code. And then I agree, you go any further than that, you should start doing structures or start hiding that parking, or doing whatever you want.
Excess and MU is required to be structured.
Okay.
So I, I think it's gonna, it's gonna get caught in there.
Okay.
All right. So recapping, I think we have everything. Watch your notes also. Page eighty-six, six-foot sidewalk. Page eighty-seven, four-foot, um, from back of sidewalk to front of building. My next change is on page ninety-two, and we are just switching Site Planner View to Special Use Permit. Page 116, um, in the bottom row, restaurants, bars, and retail are currently downtown, minimum standard downtown Reno Regional Center, which is zero for all of those. And we will add in the maximum of standard code, and I will cite the code section in there that we'll be referring to. Um, page 117, for parcels that are 300 feet in width or more shall provide a 10-foot wide pedestrian walkway or two six-foot wide pedestrian walkways. Page 118, I will add in the, um, FAR requirement for the northern section of South Virginia Transit Quarter from the regional plan and the master plan, which I believe is 2.25. It got crossed out down there on the bottom. Um, page 120, we'll remove the MSTC District Landscaping Table. Bottom of page 121, we'll remove the RLM District Landscaping Standards Table. Page 124, we'll remove the NVTC District Landscaping Table. And page 123, the E4TC District Landscaping Table. And that, I believe, is the extent of the changes that I have.
Mr. Chairman, for the record, Commissioner Wieske, I'm in agreement with those changes.
Okay. Could we have a motion then?
Sure. I'll make a motion. Um, in the case of text 130005, amendment to the TOD standards, based upon compliance with applicable findings, I move to recommend the city council approve the text amendment by ordinance with the adjustments that Claudia has just delineated, and I can make all the findings.
Commissioner Wieske, I'll second that motion, and I can make all of the findings.
A motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passes six to zero. Next item on the agenda is TXT 140002, time extension.
Once again, Claudia Hansen, Planning and Engineering Manager. Um, I did put together a, a small slideshow for you, examples of parking lots in the downtown. So why are we looking at standards for parking lots in the downtown? Um, the main reason, of course, is the health of the Chucky River, and as well as visitors to downtown and their local residents of downtown, to maintain the beauty of the downtown area and the health of the Chucky River. We have a number of non-conforming improvements out there in the downtown area, as you are well aware. This is a portion of a parking lot that was put in prior to our requirement for a permit for, um, um, sorry, I'm really tired, um, the permit for, um, flatwork. Uh, so these curbs, these curb stops were put in overhanging the sidewalk and eventually have been broken down and are now deteriorating into the sidewalk. And drainage is also an issue on this one. Um, we now, working with the Building Division, we do require, um, a permit for flatwork. Um, insufficient maintenance, I don't even know why this planter is there. This is in the middle of the sidewalk on Sierra Street in front of the county, county parking lot. Um, it's a very nice trash can. I think it was supposed to have a tree in it at one time, um, and now it's pretty much a trash can right in the middle of the sidewalk. We have abandoned sites in downtown. This is the one, um, next to the river. You can kind of see the baseball stadium over to the, on the right photo there. It's across from Men Wielding Fire. It was, it had a permit for a temporary parking lot. They pulled the permit. It was never constructed. Um, you can actually, that middle site, you can see a little bump over the, over the jersey wall, the jersey barrier there. That is an artificial tree. That was their landscaping, their attempt at landscaping. Um, so this one, it never got a, um, it never was finalized. It was barely used, and now it's been abandoned. We have a lot of parking lots in the downtown area are being used because they've always been there, in quotes. Um, and this is one of our, um, one of our property owners who actually usually works very well with the city, um, but their, their rear parking lot has, is a mishmash of gravel and dirt and various patches of asphalt and concrete. As I mentioned before, paving without a permit is no longer allowed. Um, this is the site at, um, Sierra and Liberty and has drainage issues when and without any landscaping or lighting. Catering, not catering to, um, supporting our effort to enhance the downtown and support the, um, uh, tourism for the downtown area. This is the view that you see when you come out of the baseball stadium. So if you walk out the front door, that's what you see. Um, the middle shot there is the former Mispa site, which was paved over and fenced off and is used for parking now. Um, and then this, the foreground is a parking lot right across the street, um, which was just paved over at some point in the last six to 10 years, probably. No landscaping, no lighting. We have partially constructed projects in downtown. Excuse me. Um, this was to be the office site for the waterfront tower. Um, the building is partially constructed. The parking lot was paved, lighting was installed, landscaping, if it was going to be installed, would have exceeded, thank you, would have exceeded, um, code for landscaping. So they could reduce their landscape area, um, but in this case, the project was never finalized and the parking lot is informally being used by adjacent businesses. Uh, change of ownership, a lot of change of ownership in downtown. The Sienna, I think, is a great example. It's changed hands twice, um, since we worked on the expansion. Right through the middle, that middle shot there, there is a, um, I believe a sewer line easement right through there, so that's a no-build area. And, um, there is a bond in place to install the landscaping in there. Um, and it's had numerous extensions on it. Um, but this was looked at as being a temporary parking lot, and we have never seen the improvements come onto it. So this is an example of old code, Sierra, the other, across the street, um, from the, the previous one that I showed you. Um, the old code, which was perimeter landscaping, and then, um, uh, perimeter on the street front edge as well as the side property line. And that white stuff is snow that we need more of. Um, this is the court parking lot, county court parking lot, which is built to, almost to the temporary standards. It has no interior landscaping, which is not required for the temporary parking lot. It does have lighting. Um, it has a number of locations where the paving is failing, that's caving in. And then this is where it's close to current code. The street trees should be on the curb side, not on the parking lot side. But if those were reversed, that, this parking lot would be built to temporary parking lot standards. And that big terracotta pot is right behind where I was taking this picture. So if you need to throw something away, I guess it's there for you. So that's what I have on what we have downtown. So the changes that we, that I brought forward on here, um, on page 14 of the ordinance, open lot parking lots are allowed indefinitely when full landscaping improvements are installed. Um, Commissioner Taylor brought that forward, um, to if it's built to full standards, that we should consider, um, allowing that as a permanent facility if they put full landscaping, interior landscaping, perimeter landscaping, full lighting, um, to potentially allow that as a, as a permanent use. Landscaping shall meet standards for permanent parking lots as required. Parking area landscaping and screening requirements, where standards are based on the number of required parking spaces, the number of provided parking spaces shall apply. So in, um, parking, in landscape standards for parking lots, the, um, the number of trees and other square footage of landscaping is based on the required number of parking spaces. We would base that on this provided, because typically on an off-site parking lot in downtown, you're not going to have a required amount of parking spaces. It's going to be something above and beyond. Paragraph two, open lot, open lot parking lots may be allowed temporarily by the administrator for a maximum of five years. So I increased that from the three to the five. At the end, at the end of the five-year period, the applicant or property owner may request to continue the use of the temporary open lot parking for an additional five years. The administrator shall make a recommendation to the city council regarding the five-year time extension. City council shall make the final determination of the approval of the time extension. Additional site improvements may be required if the time extension is approved. There's a lot of discussion going back and forth if they add in some lighting or some landscaping. And I wrote it in such a way to give council the ability to add in whatever landscaping that would be appropriate at that time. Every parking lot's probably going to be different in downtown. If it's an open lot parking that's 10 spaces versus 200 spaces, if it's on the river, if it's on a, on a side street. Um, so that would leave it up to council to be able to add that requirement in at that time. Temporary open lot parking pursuant to subsection two above shall include lighting, sidewalks, and street trees required under Title 18. The sidewalks may exclude the four-and-a-half, four-foot, because we just changed that in the other ordinance. I would change that once changed. Four-foot portion required for window shopping and outdoor seating as applicable per this chapter. And then the, I would make it the applicant or developer shall submit security or bonding prior to issuance of a permit for a temporary open lot parking facility to provide for full landscape improvements of a permanent parking lot. So at that time, the, the time they come in with the temporary, they would provide bonding to bring in the full landscaping. Um, I had a discussion with Mr. Crater saying that he would, um, request that, that bonding be provided at the five-year extension point. So he'll, he'll probably bring that up when he comes up, but I just thought I'd throw that in now. Um, and then at the end of the allowed time for temporary open lot parking, the site, whether it's the five years without the extension or 10 years with the extension, um, at the end of the allowed time for a temporary open lot parking, the site shall be upgraded to include full landscape improvements, or the open lot parking shall be removed. So that would be the use being removed. That could include, um, fencing it off or developing it. There was a lot of discussion at the last meeting. There was, um, a variety of direction, so I took my best shot at that. Hopefully I got this closer to where you were all going with this. But I'm available for questions. I'm not sure if you have any comment cards.
I, I do have one public comment. Ken Crater?
Thank you for the record, Ken Crater. A couple comments on what Claudia put together. First of all, this is a very important issue, and obviously we've had a lot of conversation on parking tonight. But, uh, again, uh, we have built a project in downtown Reno, our State Street Plaza, where La Familia and Fuego and our new little La Crepe Cafe are. And, uh, for retail, you can live with minimal amounts of parking because you're in downtown Reno now. So there's a lot more pedestrian traffic, it's more built up, there's multi-story office buildings to, uh, provide, uh, clients for your retail or restaurant business. Uh, but offices are another story. You've got to have parking for offices in downtown Reno, or you cannot get your building leased. Uh, because, uh, again, we don't have that subway system or mass transit like they do in large cities, where it's convenient for a whole lot of people to get to their place of work conveniently. And so parking is really critical, which is why this issue is critical, because there are, is a lot of open lot parking where that is the, uh, parking that these office buildings use, uh, for their, uh, for their employees and their clients. So with what Claudia put together, um, first of all, the bond that she mentioned, uh, if you've tried to get a bond recently, it's next to impossible unless you have money in the bank to cover the cost of that bond. And it seems to me for that initial five-year extension, it's not so much an issue. But I can see Claudia's point that then if you come back for a five-year extension before the city council, then it makes sense at that point in time to require the bond for the full landscaping improvement. So if, uh, whatever happens, the developer leaves town or, or, uh, things go south, then the money's there to provide those full improvements. So I think that's a, a great option, if that's something the commission could live with. And then I like what she put together in terms of that flexibility for council. The notes that I had from the last meeting and some of the issues that the commission brought up was pavement sections. And so again, at the, uh, five-year extension period, that would give staff and then council the ability to say, hey, we need you to now go in and retrofit that pavement for a 10- or 15-year design life, so we know it's going to stay in good shape while this temporary lot exists. Or if you turn it into permanent open parking with full landscaping improvements, you wouldn't have to go back and repave it at that point in time. Uh, making street trees permanent, uh, to me, that's a huge issue in downtown Reno. Um, at least you want to have nice street trees, uh, along the sidewalks, on the streets. Uh, that's a critical issue. And after five years, uh, maybe that's something that needs to happen is those street trees become permanent and meeting code for street trees. And then also, somebody last time brought up, and I like this idea, uh, that, uh, in order to get that final extension, and we were talking, I think, three, four-year extensions at the time, that you bring forward a draft development plan that includes phasing at that point in time. So now you've got to put some thought into what you're going to do with this open lot parking for the long term, and, and we need to know what your plans are to know that you're putting that sort of thought process into it. So those are some of the notes that I had, but, uh, I think we're heading in the right direction, and, uh, I would like to see if commission would be interested in, uh, in that bond only being required at that five-year extension, just because of the feasibility of, of getting a bond these days. Uh, that's it. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Ken. Any other public comments? We'll close public comments, bring it back to the commissioners. Questions? Discussion?
Uh, Commissioner, sorry, Commissioner Kaufman. Claudia, um, so how does this affect all the current open parking lots out there? So basically, if I understand right, the, the courthouse one, it's set to expire, right? And so this, they would only come in for a five-year extension, that's all they have?
They're at four years. I believe they're at four right now. So this would get them, it would get them to next, no, this would get them to next December.
And then they have
Then they would be, then they would be at their five year.
And then they have to issue a bond if we go that way, and they got five years.
Right.
Okay. Um, there was the other question I had.
And as far as the other parking lots, that is the only one that we officially have in as a temporary parking lot.
Okay, that's a good question. Like the one across from Aces, um, so it's, it's a parking lot, right? But, so they get another 10 years, basically.
We would have the ability to, mm, I'd have, I'd have to work with code enforcement and legal on this one, but to start the process potentially on those. I don't know when those were paved, so I'd have to go back and do some research on each one of those specifically. They're each going to be their own set of standards. Um, they all came in at different times and in different ways.
So we talked about that lot at, um, it's second in Lake, um, that little triangle lot that's across from Aces there, that's now, it's, it's got, uh, screening around it. It's not really a parking lot, so if it ever comes
First and, First and Lake?
First, is it First and Lake? I think it's
Across from Men Wielding Fire?
Yeah.
Yes, First and Lake, uh-huh.
So it's not really a parking lot now, right?
That's fenced off now.
It's fenced off, so
So that's not being used.
That's not, we can't even do anything about that.
Correct.
Okay. Thanks.
As long as it doesn't become a nuisance, code enforcement, I think, has cited them in the past for trash and dumping on the site, but it's been cleaned up since then.
Okay, thanks.
Commissioner Olivas, um, actually, your slideshow brought up quite a few questions.
Thought it might.
I don't know. But, um, I guess kind of that, to that lot across from Men Wielding Fire, I mean, what, if we give somebody a temporary parking lot, what is kind of an official decommissioning of that? What would we require them to do to revert it back to, I guess, just vacant land? Just screen it so nobody can actually park there?
That one already had some form of pavement on it. It was kind of patchwork to begin with, so, and before that, it was a building, so bringing it back to its natural So bringing it back to its natural state would have been going back, I don't know, 80 years or something probably. So we had them, um, screen, uh, fence that off. I'm not sure it's screened right now, but it's fenced off.
Okay. Well, I guess, I mean, that's what I'm just wondering. I mean, do you require them to remove the paving that's there, whatever, get it back to dirt? I mean, build Pioneer again across the street over there, or?
All this would, all this is requiring right now is to, is to fence it off.
To quit using it?
Right, to quit using it.
Okay.
Most of them right now have some sort of pavement on them.
Yeah. That would, and that would just degrade. I guess I'm just curious, after seeing some of those, they kind of fell into, I mean, they just walked away. So I guess then that's where I was kind of thinking, I'm kind of open to the idea of the five-year bond, uh, delaying it. But if we had to do something to decommission it, then we might want the bond upfront. But if we just let it erode, then at the end of five years, that's all we would do anyways?
Yes, is that, it, it, the open lot parking is a use.
Yeah.
So we would, you would need to cease using that as an open lot parking lot. We could put in that you would have to fence and screen it and put a solid screen in there, which would be slats or that mesh that they put up on the fences.
Okay. Okay. I was getting to see if there was any reason to have a bond upfront to decommission it, but if, if not, then I could be okay with not having the bond until the five-year extension.
If they do, if at the end, they, um, they don't block it off, it, code enforcement would be involved and they would cite them for using the parcel, ultimately going to, um, um, through the code enforcement process, which can be a lien on the property or any number of ways that that can turn out. But we could put in there if you wanted, if you felt it necessary to require fencing and screening when it's decommissioned.
Commissioner Stapleton?
Yeah, Claudia, I have sort of a big picture question. I remember our discussion from last time about this and the direction that we went in, in terms of the five years, the five-year extensions and the option to make it a permanent lot. If I remember correctly, at the beginning of that discussion last time, we talked about the fact that the intent was to not have open lot parking in, in downtown? Is that the case? That open lot parking, you, before, as it stands now, is open lot parking an allowed use in downtown? In the, in the DRC?
No.
Okay, so that's been the?
As a permanent use, you mean?
Right.
Correct.
Right. And what was the direction, what was the direction of, from council on this?
Um, to review the timing on temporary parking lot and standards for open lot parking, I believe.
And general standards?
Yeah. It was, it was fairly open-ended on open lot parking.
Okay, I'm just wondering, yeah, I'm just wondering, I know that we're going in this direction of, you know, trying to make sure that the parking lots are improved and, you know, to, to, to increase the, you know, maintenance and, and make sure that if they're going to be there, they, they look nice and that, that the responsibility is taken for making the improvements. But is this even the, the intent? I mean, do we, do we want to go towards having permanent open lot parking lots in downtown? Because as I remember, when we discussed it last time, the idea is that, you know, you want to have development in the, in these vacant lots. Eventually, what you want is development in downtown. You don't want parking lots. And the reason that the temporary permits were issued in the first place is because development has slowed and people are using it for parking anyway, so we want this mechanism to allow it to be temporary parking, but that the long-range vision is that we didn't even want open lot parking. So just a general question, are we going in the right direction?
I would say there's not agreement on that.
Okay.
And I would be open to suggestion or discussion from Planning Commission on that, on whether that's something that you want to see on a permanent basis. Um, there are a number of buildings in downtown that have zero parking, um, that are probably looking for parking spaces. Maybe you want to push that towards a structured parking, or maybe a permanently landscaped open lot parking.
Okay, and I'm not attached to going either way. I just, I think that the larger discussion is important in terms of, is this, if we're going towards more permanent lots in downtown and making that allowed, is that something we want? And if it is, maybe we need to think a little bit more strategically in terms of, you know, can that be anywhere? You know, maybe that, you know, ideally, if you've got a redevelopment area and you're trying to, you know, encourage development on those vacant lots, maybe you want the parking around the edges and not in the center. I don't know. I just, just throwing that out there, because I think that's something we should be thinking about if we're looking at making this change to allowing open lot parking permanently in downtown.
Commissioner Olivas, I guess, um, I'm thinking almost that the, the requirement to go to the, the city council would probably answer that, and, and they, they would deal with it at that time, more on a bigger policy basis, but I, I agree with what you're saying.
I, I just, I think, I mean, this is one of our jobs as the Planning Commission, is to think about these questions. I think it would be great if council had given us direction, but I think this is one of our jobs, is to think about the policy also, not just the, you know, the, you know, criteria and the specifics, the details of code, is to think about, you know, larger land use issues and, 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 you know, plans, long-range plans for what the downtown, I, I think that's, you know, sort of our, supposed to be our specialty.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Wieski, I agree with Commissioner Stapleton completely. And I, I think if city council leaves it open-ended, it's for us to fill in some of the pieces and to think into the future and to plan. And she's right on. And that's what we should be doing. And I think that's why last month, we had discussion, and Ken, I'm glad you brought it back up this, this month, that, um, you know, we look for a phasing plan for the development of that lot in order to get your second five years from year, at year five, when you come back before city council, you have some type of an idea what you're going to do with that lot, because open lot parking is not desirable downtown. That's not what we want. We want it to look good until you're ready to build. If you've got to go through a recession, or it takes you a while to get plans drawn up, it doesn't mean that you've, you've got to have construction drawings for a 35-story open gaming casino. It just means that you have an idea of what you want to do, and you present it to council and let council decide whether it's sufficient enough to continue on and give you another five years of temporary parking. And at the same time, you may make some improvements to it, to, to make it look desirable for those guests of ours that are in town, or for the locals who like to look at something nice downtown rather than concrete, sand, aggregate, and some asphalt with old stripes on it. So, um, I think what Claudia brought back to us is really in tune with what we brought, what we discussed last month. I would like to see the inclusion, um, of that phased plan as a submission with the bond at year five to go from year six to 10 with. And, and I would be in favor of a motion when that happens.
I, I have a question, Claudia. So really, the only temporary parking lot we have in, in Reno right now is a courthouse?
The only official one falling under the timeline of this, the only one that came in and applied for it. We do have the Sienna, which is under a bond, but that's associated with the expansion of the Sienna.
So if somebody comes in, what are the standards for temporary? Do, do we say, uh, it's, I know it has to have a certain amount of landscaping, but does it need to be blacktop, not like, you know, the one over by the baseball stadium, which is?
It has to be, have to be asphalt or concrete, or another approved surface by the engineer.
Okay.
And then street trees and lighting.
Okay. Okay.
But no perimeter landscaping, no interior landscaping.
Claudia, Commissioner Wieski, don't, doesn't it also have to drain through, uh, sand oil interceptor or something? It can't just drain to the gutters and into the Truckee River. So drainage is important to us also. That's why those, a lot of those other lots that Claudia showed us were great examples of what we don't want to have continuing. We, we want to protect our river.
And there are, there are, there were a couple of spot, shots in there where they're parking on dirt. And the code does allow for the administrator to send out a nine-month paving letter. So you send out a warning letter, you've got nine months to improve your surf, to improve your, your parking lot. Now that that requires a permit, we can now trigger the landscaping and lighting with that. So that was a little, a little loophole that we, we just closed up in the last few months.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Reno, um, I agree with Commissioner Wieski. I, I believe that, that we.
Or we need, the bonding shouldn't be to fully landscape it again, because at that point, it should be construction plans. It shouldn't, so the bonding isn't for the purpose of maintaining it.
So on those last two comments, we would strike paragraph number one, which allows the parking lots to continue indefinitely, and just go back to only temporary for five years by the administrator with a bond to restore the site to, I don't want to say pre-existing condition, but a state that is acceptable, um, and to secure the property. And then come back at five years for an extension to city council, or a request for extension to city council. And the bond would be a lot less at that point.
Well.
I would imagine to restore.
Sounds like, I mean, if the indefinitely actually becomes quite a concern when we talk about the, the actual policy down there. I mean, are we, what's the next step? And where are we going to go? So I think, I almost think the, in my opinion, temporary with temporary standards, and if they go for the five years, they got to upgrade those standards to more of a, what would be a, more of a permanent standard. But at the end of 10 years, the bond's purpose is to decommission it and take out all the, the, whatever improvements, I mean, and, and fence the thing off with more permanent fencing until they have better plans approved. If, if that's the goal, and, but indefinitely, and the, the goals here of not having the open parking, that sounds like what we need rather than indefinitely.
The idea with the street trees was that the street trees are going to be required no matter what gets built on the property. So that was why we went with, you put in the street trees now, because when you get around a building, your building, you'll have 10-year-old trees to, to support your structure. Requiring interior landscaping or landscaping, any landscaping within the lot, if you're intending to have the parking lot go away in 10 years, it really takes five years for a plant to mature around here, so I'm not really sure the, the, the benefit of requiring any additional landscaping after the five.
Yeah. Ken, did you want to make a comment, or?
For the record again, Ken Crater, I just wrote up some language on, uh, the phasing plan before the meeting. I thought you might be interested in hearing that.
Sure, go ahead.
Upon request for the time extension, a draft development plan shall be submitted with the application that includes a phasing plan. Simple as that.
Okay, thanks.
Mr. Chairman, and so that phasing plan could be, that it's going to be a permanent parking lot. That could be an option as part of that phasing plan. So taking, for instance, the courthouse parking, maybe they want to switch it into permanent parking lot. But as long as the city council's happy with that and they have a phased plan in front of them, it's a five-year mark, then that's what, that's what happens to that lot. But at least they know what's going to happen to that lot.
Go ahead, Commissioner Stapleton.
I was going to say, so, so is that then a change to a, because we're talking about two things. You're suggesting that we do allow a permanent as part of the phasing plan?
Well, that becomes an option to the city council, but I think that at the five-year mark, they need to bond it to decommission it, have a phasing plan. But if that phasing plan is to have a permanent parking lot, then that's, I guess, it's a purview of the, the, you know, the council to do that. But it, they need to bond to have it decommissioned, um, at the five-year mark, and to have a phasing plan, which, like I said, that phasing plan could be a permanent parking lot.
Claudia, I have a question on the bonding. Who would set that bond?
Uh, we require a, an estimate from, if it's a bond for landscaping, we would require an estimate from, from a landscape contractor, um, on the cost of the installation.
Okay.
Or a construction company for reverting it back to an acceptable conditions. Right. Licensed professional.
You know, one of the other things we talked about last time was if they had the extension, then what other improvements, you know, if it's going to continue to be a parking lot for at least five more years, would they have to make more improvements to that parking lot?
Well, the bottom of paragraph two says, "City council shall make the final determination of the approval of the time extension. Additional site improvements may be required in the time, if the time extension is approved."
So it, so the other thing is if they wanted, you know, if we require a bond, then they would have to do that before they ever went before the city council. Is that correct? On the five-year extension?
That's what I heard tonight in the discussion, that that would be a portion of the five-year
Okay.
Extension.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Wieski, Claudia, um, paragraph one allows for a parking lot indefinitely if it's landscaped, but I thought we did not allow for parking lots in this corridor, in this regional center, excuse me.
This is an, this is an addition, to allow them if you build it to full. Right now, it's only allowed temporarily, and you only have to do street trees.
So if we.
So this is, this was saying, if you put in all of the improvements, then you could have it permanently.
Okay. Okay. And a comment, not a question, then, that's why I would not be in favor of the indefinite parking lot as stated in paragraph one, because it goes back to, um, a regional center that we would like to see businesses on the ground floor, and if they wanted to do a parking structure above, what a great opportunity for the courthouse to have a parking structure above, and we have more retail restaurants, bars below.
Um, I would, uh, in general, agree with Commissioner Wieski. I was, I know that Commissioner Reno's suggestion was, you know, with an option for a permanent, which I think would then require a change in section one, and I know Commissioner Wieski said he, he wanted to delete section one from the proposal. I just want to weigh in and say that I think when we do get to talk about, you know, really in terms of long-range planning, what we want for downtown and changing this policy, Claudia said this would change the DRC. But I think if we were going to do that, that what we would want to do is look at the DRC overall and look at sort of the vision and really see if this is something that, that we, we think fits with the long-range vision. And so I think if we, if we are going to have this discussion, you know, I think either we take out section one, or we have a little bit different discussion and really look at the DRC and the policy and the long-range vision and see if this is something that fits. I think if we're going to make this change to it tonight, that's not quite doing, uh, service to the, to that plan, as well as our jobs as commissioner, as Planning Commissioner, to look at, look at sort of the long-range vision for downtown. That was non-committal, but I think I just wanted to point that out.
Mr. Chairman, so my idea that it would go on indefinite as a permanent parking lot, I, obviously, I don't think any landowner downtown would want permanent. I mean, they'd want to develop land, um, but that's why I was saying that, that you have a, a phasing plan in place, like Commissioner Wieski had that phasing plan and, um, and then moved forward, but then at least it ends up being a permanent parking lot if that's what that phasing plan is, and it's approved by the city council. You have to remember that it's a five-year, this phasing plan has to also be approved, along with the, and they'll have bonding, so it's got to be approved, so there'll be vision there, which they'll compare against the, the intent of what's going on downtown and so forth. So that, that's what I was getting at.
The way it's currently worded, council could only approve the parking lot for another five years on a temporary basis. It's the only way it's allowed, if you remove paragraph one.
Well, I guess that is the vision of this, right? We don't want a bunch of parking lot.
Phasing plan wouldn't be to keep it as a parking lot.
Okay, so then that really negates phasing plan, so they'll, they'll come up with something to put at that parking lot.
Or they would have to have it as a permanent. Or they would have to have it as a permanent.
So far the discussion I've heard is that it would not be allowed as a permanent use.
They'd have to change the overall plan if that's what they wanted. Because that's currently not allowed under the DRC or whatever. So if that, they would have to amend that also, or we would have to amend it. Somebody would have to amend that before I think either Commissioner Reno's or Kaufman's plan could go. I mean, there couldn't be, unless we do this here, there couldn't be a permanent parking lot. Is that kind of-
Commissioner Wieski, that's exactly what's happening right now. That's, is that these temporary parking lots are turning out to be indefinite parking lots. They're not maintained, they don't meet any standards. So, all right, that didn't work. So we're going to plan for the future to do the same thing over again? I'm not ready to make that kind of a decision again. It's already been proven it doesn't work. Let's change it. Give them some structure. Here you go. You didn't do it on your own, so now here's, you've got 10 years ultimately or five years left if you've got a permit out right now for a temporary. Here's what you've got ahead of you. This is what you've got to do. Be a developer or let a developer take that property over and develop it.
Mr. Chair.
The thing I'm confused about is those ISRs that we see that are around town that are screened off and aren't kept up. This would make them bring it up to a usable parking lot with vegetation, lighting.
No, that-
Not necessarily. Not necessarily. The one, it's, like I said, every one of them's different. If it is, if it's an, we have a couple dirt lots that are being used for open lot parking. We could go in now and give them a paving letter, which would then trigger this process if they chose to, or they could stop using it. So those would be their options. Ones that are being, and that's, I can think of about three of those, and I'm sure there's more. The ones, say, outside of the baseball stadium, and that's about five parcels in there with a couple different owners. I would have to look into the history of when those were paved, how they're being used. And we could potentially start the 10-year process on some of those. I just have to see how they were originally permitted and if they were permitted. So each one's going to be different.
Okay, so those parcels right now are not on any kind of timeframe? They're not on the-
No. And I don't thi- One of them was Retract, and I'm looking at Jonathan, one of them was a Retract parcel. It was a long skinny one by the alleyway that goes through there that had been an open lot parking before, before baseball and before Retract, I believe. I don't know if you remember that one. It's a long skinny parcel and they had a little booth and it was an actual, like, paid parking lot.
Right next to the men's club.
Yes, next to the men's club. So that was an open lot parking, so they would have an actual business license history. So that one, I think, is most likely grandfathered because they were established, they'd been there for decades. So we probably could not apply this to them. Any other ones that are just, have just been paved and are sometimes used, there's a chance we could start this process, working with code enforcement, to get this going on them.
If we left one in.
No. You don't need one. It would be the same one way or another. One doesn't change that. One just, one determines the ultimate outcome in 10 years.
I think, Commissioner Stapleton, that there's two things. There's an enforcement issue with the ones, some of the existing lots, and then there's the ones that are actually being used and have been issued temporary permits. So I think some of the ones you see are not, you know, they're just vacant lots. Bummer.
Yeah, and each one of them has a different history.
And I'm catching up since I wasn't here at the last meeting, but the impetus is valuable. Thank you.
Well, I would support, in agreement with Commissioner Wieski, I would support this with removing section one and the changes for the bonding.
And bonding at the five years, and then there's discussion on a phasing plan. I don't know if that comes into play, if it has to go away at 10 years anyway.
We had discussion of a decommissioning bond also, and that maybe-
That would be the bond. I'm sorry, that was the bond I was referring to.
Okay.
So the landscaping bond really becomes irrelevant now. That's no such thing.
Right, if you get rid of paragraph one, you don't need a landscaping bond.
Yeah, it's a decommissioning bond. That's, I think, what we want.
But yeah, we still want them to put landscaping along the sidewalks, correct? So that'll still be required as part of that bond.
No, that would be required at the beginning.
Oh, that'll be required at the beginning, okay.
That's at day one.
Okay.
Day one or day, five years plus one?
Day one.
Day one.
That's why the court parking lot has street trees.
Yeah.
I thought you said those were in temporary planters on the ground.
They are.
Those are real street trees?
They're real street trees. They should come out of the planters or they're going to die, but they're street trees. That's my unofficial landscape comment on that.
So did we agree to take out the first paragraph then?
Yes.
And it was, I don't think it was specifically stated, but there was a little bit of discussion that maybe an intent statement in there to not permanently allow parking lots in the downtown.
Is that in the DRC now?
There's, there are policies that would support that. I don't know if it's specifically stated in that clearly, but there are policies that would support that.
I don't know. What does everyone feel on the intent statement?
I don't want to see permanent parking lots.
Would the courthouse be an example? Because that's one example.
I think there's going to be, there's going to be parking in downtown somewhere. I think it's a matter of where it is, you know? So I think it's a matter of looking at the policy and the long-range planning for, you know, identifying and having a little bit more control over that. At some point, there's got to be some parking.
Well, structured parking wouldn't fall under these. Structured parking is development.
Great.
But right now, the court parking lot is heavily used after hours and weekends for events downtown.
Then it may be if the county put a structure up there and charged everybody $2 to park, then they could pay for their parking structure and our taxes wouldn't have to go up. Just an idea.
Okay, well, I would support the intent statement then.
So I have removing section one, an intent statement regarding not allowing permanent parking lots in permanent open lot parking, open lot parking lots in downtown, a decommissioning bond at five years. And I had one little comment that was my addition on paragraph three to, for developer, have an applicant slash developer. That's just a little technicality.
What about, in order to get this, the five-year extension, they must provide a phased development plan?
If they're not allowed to go permanent, it has to go away at 10 years.
So it won't be-
I don't know if a phasing plan is going to do you any good.
Okay. All right, that's a good point. I hadn't thought of that.
Commissioner Reno, I don't know that that's not a bad idea to still have a phasing plan. At least have some kind of vision for what that lot would look like in the future. Even if it never happens, at least there would be some kind of vision for that lot.
I don't know of a developer or a property owner anywhere that's going to put up the money for elevations, if, just for elevations and a storyboard. And they're not, they're not going to get more than five, an additional five years out of it? No way.
And we're condemning their future, so why make them make a plan for it?
I understand what you're saying, Commissioner Reno, but I can tell you, no way.
Along those lines, would we want to allow three more years if they do that at the end of the five? Or just cut it off?
That's enough.
Okay. How about a motion?
If anybody has motion from last month.
This is Commissioner Stapleton, and I would like to make a motion. In case number TXT14-00002, based on compliance with the applicable findings, I move to recommend that city council approve the text amendment by ordinance with the following changes. The deletion of section one, the addition of a bond for decommission, and-
At five years.
The bond for decommission at five years and, what's the third thing?
An intent.
Oh, and an intent statement that there be no long-term, no permanent parking. The intent statement that we discussed earlier.
And the addition of the word applicant with, before the word developer in paragraph three.
And the addition of the word applicant before the word developer in paragraph three. And I can make the findings.
Commissioner Wieski, I'll second that and I can make all the findings.
A motion, second, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Passes six to zero. Truckee Meadows Regional Planning, ladies on report.
We have not had a meeting. We will have one the 22nd of this month. I have not seen an agenda yet, so I cannot prep you on what we will be discussing. But it is the 22nd of January.
Staff announcements.
The, the, tonight you saw the standards for the TODs, and that will be going, forwarded on to city council. You will see the zoning map amendment associated with this and the master plan amendment that you saw in November before you in February. So the zone change that follows up on the master plan amendment. So hopefully, we will have everything done by March, and a second meeting of city council in March, maybe first meeting in April. The Southeast Connector was approved by city council. That was the day before your last meeting, so I'm not even sure if I forwarded that message. As I mentioned, the TOD master plan amendment was approved by city council, and that is going to regional planning in two weeks, three weeks later this month. And does everybody know their ward assignment on the planning commission? I'm not sure if people were notified. I guess not. Are you? Oh, that's one I have written down, so maybe I have the wrong one. Well, then I'll get it to you because that's not what I have written down. That's what I said.
Can you email it?
I'll forward those on to you. Apparently I have the wrong ones down. Well, there's only one other. So Kevin would be at large. Doug would be Ward Two. Jason is Ward Four. Paul is Ward Five. Chuck is Ward One. Dagny is Ward Three, and Kathleen would be the mayor's appointment. And that is the end of my announcements.
Okay. How about commissioners' suggestion for future agenda items?
Mr. Chairman, I would like to ask that we have put on our agenda a discussion and debate regarding residential adjacency to 24-hour businesses or restaurants slash bars. We seem to be looking at things a little bit differently than some recent projects that have come before us. So if we could have a discussion on that, I think that would be wonderful.
A discussion or presentation?
Either or. I mean, I'm not, I think it's, I think it's a discussion with staff. So it could be, as long as we can discuss it. I don't want just a presentation where we can't openly discuss and debate and then maybe give direction to staff or ask city council, at least our liaison, for some input.
Okay, so that would be a presentation and a discussion with potential suggestion to council regarding 24-hour uses adjacent to residentially zoned property?
Yes. And the second thing I would like to have a discussion on is us getting all of these wonderful projects in disc form, electronic form, months before they appear before us. I have a wonderful collection of CDs and discs, and I have no idea if they're current, when we're going to see them, if we're going to see them, should I throw them away? And I don't want them in my house anymore.
I'll second that.
Any other commissioners? Okay, public comments. Seeing no one in the audience, all closed public comments and a motion to adjourn. All in favor?
Aye.
Meeting's adjourned. Thanks, everybody. Hope you had a great-